This is from the school committee, so that's when the school committee rises, they'll want to see this one. Yeah, so we need to generate a smile.
Yeah.
Yeah, he said.
Yeah, yeah.
So? Yeah. He's still good. Have you had a car? Yeah. We have a car, we don't have a car. I know, I know we're calling it that, but maybe whatever point out. Yeah, I think about the people, everything is a challenge. One reason is really, uh, we're missing a bit, don't have a direction.
Should be, should be on the new town meeting time.
Well, maybe.
Hey, how you doing?
Oh, hey, sir, thank you.
How are you? See you.
They did not, no, did not.
With a quorum present and it being seven o'clock, I'll call a meeting in order. The first order of business is safety minutes. You should note that in the back of the auditorium are exits, so in case of an emergency, that's one way out. And to my left and to my right are other exits, uh, which can be used in case of an emergency. The seating arrangements tonight, just to review it, so that there's no confusion or concern. To my left is the select board, to my immediate left is the town clerk, uh, and to her left is town council. To my right is the finance committee. The school committee is seated to my, uh, is to the front of the auditorium, to your right, along with the planning board, and behind them are town staff. Town staff are non-voters and are by virtue of their, uh, by virtue of their being involved in a number of articles, they're present here tonight to participate. Also, um, the overflow room, although it is open, uh, it is being used exclusively for non-voters. So if, if non-voters have come to observe our meeting tonight, they will do that observing from the overflow room, which is the lower cafeteria. If for some reason you are a voter and find yourself in the overflow room, and there are seats available in this auditorium, we will not be conducting business in that, in that room. If this room fills to capacity and we need the overflow room, we'll place an assistant moderator in that room to help us with the meeting. As, as of the moment, I know of any, I do not know of anyone who has requested any outside speakers, but if there are non-voters who feel, who, uh, makers of motions feel is important to bring something special to the town meeting, they will only be allowed to address the town meeting upon affirmative vote of the town meeting assembled. There's a bit of a concern about how I recognize calling the question. What is calling the question? Calling a question is when someone in the room feels like the debate has gone on long enough and they wish to go to a vote. Calling a question is not debatable, and we would go to an immediate vote at that time following a call to the question with a second. I will not recognize calling the question as a shout-out from the floor. If you wish to call the question, you must go to one of the mics, either the pro mic or the con mic at the front of the auditorium and make the, the motion to call the question from the microphone. I will also not recognize calling of the question at the end of a speech. So that if you make a speech and call the question, I will not recognize that. So the only way to reckon, to, to call the question is go to the microphone and the first words out of your mouth is, "I move to call the question." We've had a number of amendments submitted. We're asking that amendments be submitted in writing, so that if during the course of the, of the evening, you feel like you want to make an amendment, we ask that you write it out and bring it to us on, on the stage. We'll take a quick look at it, just to make sure that it's proper as to form and, and legality, and then proceed, uh, with, with your amendment from that point on. Speaker times, uh, we are limiting speakers to a certain number of minutes. If you are the maker of a motion, uh, that is that you move the motion, uh, we're limiting you to five minutes. If you are a follow-up speaker, uh, we're limiting that to three minutes. That's a moderator's, at the moderator's discretion. There are a couple of instances tonight where the, where the boards have split their votes, and in the instance where there is a split vote, we're going to give the opportunity for the minority position on the board, uh, to make them, to make a statement, and where it is a narrow split, to give them an equal amount of time. The, uh, you may have noticed that, that there is a, uh, that there are three questions on the ballot, on the, on the ballot, which will be voted on next Tuesday, May 20th. So pay attention to that as we go through the, uh, as we go through the, the meeting tonight. Some of those questions will be, will be talked to in terms of their relevance and importance. Some of the, uh, warrant articles tonight, uh, we'll start off with a, a motion to take no action on those. There are two of those where we'll, where we're going to be hearing to take no action on those, and they will become the subject of a special town meeting, uh, in June. The special town meeting in June is on the 16th, there'll be an election on the 24th. So keep that in mind. We have a quorum of 200, as I mentioned, we've, we've met the quorum. We need to hold the quorum until the, until the end of the meeting. We have a bylaw which says that, that no motion, uh, on a new article can be introduced to the town meeting after 11 o'clock. Hopefully we don't even get near that. But if it, if we get toward 11 o'clock and there, there's typically a motion made to extend the meeting beyond 11 o'clock, and that too would go to a vote of the town meeting. The town meeting does not have to go beyond 11 if they, uh, if they so choose. The, uh, voting device, I think, I'm expecting that most people are familiar with the voting device, which was given to you as you checked into the room. For those of, for those who have yet to experience electronic voting, you notice that the, that the voting pad has a green 1A signifying yes vote on an issue, or a red 2B button signifying a no. At this time, we typically test the system to make sure everybody understands how to use it, and it's oftentimes we give a nonsensical answer, or question to vote on, like is it going to rain tomorrow? Or, or the funniest ones usually have to do with the Red Sox. But, uh, what we're going to do tonight is we're going to answer a question that's been put to me, by a number of people and has been discussed in the pre, in the press. With, with electronic voting, we hold the voting window open for some period of time. In the past, we have not held it open for a specific period of time, but it was a sense of the, the moderator that when the voting had, when the tally had slowed down to close the voting. I have suggested that we hold the window open for 15 seconds. I've gotten some pushback saying that that's too short a period of time, and that we should hold the window open for 30 seconds. So the test tonight, and I'll ask that the, uh, that we, we have the slide prepared and presented on, on, on this. If you feel like 15 seconds is the right amount of time to hold the window open, then we'll ask you, when I call for your vote, to press 1. If you feel that 30 seconds is a more appropriate window time, I'll ask you to press 2. So if we're ready to record votes, we're ready? So we're ready. So, uh, if, if you, if you will press 1 for 15 seconds and press 2 for 30 seconds, we'll see how it turns out. You have 15 seconds. You can see a countdown clock at the top of the screen. You have two seconds, one second, done. So of the 533 votes, we had 320 voting in favor of 15 seconds and 213 voting in favor of 30 seconds. We will go with 15 seconds, the will of town meeting. Thank you. Now before we, before we move on, I'm asking everyone to silence your phones so as to not interrupt the proceedings, and, uh, I'm going to now recognize Linda Alexson for. Linda is always the one to remind us that we open our meetings with a pledge of allegiance. So if you'll all stand and join me in the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, and now I recognize Linda.
Good evening, everybody. Thank you for coming out tonight. I'm Linda Alexson, 19 Juniper Street, Chair of the Select Board. Tonight, the Select Board would like to recognize and thank Stephen Crane for his work as our town manager over the last two and a half years. Stephen's leadership helped us to navigate through some challenging and sometimes contentious issues, manage our meetings effectively, and strategically position the town for success. He has hired and promoted from within high caliber employees and developed fiscally responsible budgets. Stephen has been deeply involved in addressing the recent closure of the Ipswich River to clamming. When this issue arose several months ago, he immediately brought together federal and state agencies, our legislative delegations, and town staff to work on finding solutions. There is a long way to go, but his advocacy and efforts on our behalf, on behalf of our shell-fishing community are very much appreciated. He has also been instrumental in many other issues of tremendous importance to our town, such as his membership on the Whittier Regional Task Force that will hopefully result in the merger of the Vocational School with Northern Essex Community College, and potentially a new, much more equitable agreement among the 11 member communities. During Stephen's tenure, he played a significant role in some incredibly memorable events. He was a valued participant on the committee that organized the 80th anniversary of D-Day Remembrance Parade held in June, and was deeply involved in managing logistics for Ed Sheeran's recent visit. He ensured town services were arranged to support both of these events, which showcased Ipswich and will long live in our memories. Please join us in thanking Stephen for his contributions to Ipswich and wishing him all the best in his future endeavors. Thank you.
So we'll go to, we'll go to Article 1 of Linda Alexson.
I, Linda Alexson, 19 Juniper Street, Select Board, move to set the salaries of elected officials to transfer funds from the Electric Light Department to pay a sum of $10,991.15 for unpaid bills from appropriations to the FY25 operating budget for town and schools, to establish expenditure limitations to revolving funds, to appropriate the sum of $681,043.91 under the authority of Massachusetts General Law's Chapter 90, and to hear reports from the Strategic Planning Committee and Government Study Committee. All is set forth in Article 1 of the warrant for this town meeting. Okay, thank you. This is a standing article at every town meeting that combines several non-controversial items of town business, making the meeting more efficient, and giving us the opportunity to hear from some of our committees and their important work. The Select Board unanimously recommends this article.
Select Board recommendation is unanimous. Finance Committee?
Uh, the Finance Committee unanimously supported Article 1, 9 to 0. We encourage you all to do the same, um, as this consent calendar expedites common fees, charges, um, and non-controversial, normal town budget items.
School Committee recommendation? Unanimously supported by the School Committee. Any comments or questions from the, from the floor? If not, we'll move to a vote. All those in favor, uh, all those in favor, press 1. All those opposed, press 2, and we'll open the, the voting window now. The window is closed. And this article requires four fifths vote due to unpaid bills, and I declare that it meets the four fifths requirements and therefore passes. Uh, as part of that motion, uh, the town agreed to hear reports from two committees. The first is the Strategic Planning Committee and Clark Ziegler, uh, who's coming to the mic. So Clark is a member of the Strategic Planning Committee. So if we could have the slides for that.
Thanks. Clark Ziegler, 10 Woods Lane, on behalf of the Strategic Planning Committee. Uh, just a couple of minutes, I want to do a few things, just let you know who we are, what we've done, what we've found, and what we'll be recommending. The Strategic Planning Committee is a six-member committee appointed by the Select Board in late 2023. We've held 15 public meetings since early last year. The committee includes member, one member each from the Select Board, School Committee and Finance Committee, a business owner, and two town residents. And we're charged with developing scenarios and recommending strategies to address the major operational and capital needs of the town. What the committee did was to create a database of 64 proposed town, school, and utility investments in excess of $500,000 and outside of normal Proposition 2.5 budget increase limits. So, for example, that includes a number of major projects that you're all familiar with, like a new elementary school, public safety building, water treatment plant, um, and some, uh, less visible projects like, for example, the repair of the town hall roof. We then developed a spreadsheet model that measures the annual and. that measures the annual and cumulative cost per household of any proposed combination and timing of those investments. And those cost impacts are both property tax increases and utility rate increases for average households. We then surveyed individual members of the Select Board, School Committee, and Finance Committee on the level of household cost impacts over the next decade and in any particular year that they would deem reasonable and sustainable. So what did we find? First of all, nobody at Town Hall is responsible for maintaining a comprehensive townwide list of major expenditures, proposed investments above and beyond normal Prop. 2.5 annual increases, including the detailed costs as those estimates change and potential grants and reimbursements. The model shows that if we went charged ahead with every investment under consideration on the list without making strategic choices about their relative priority and timing would result in an unreasonable property tax and utility rate burden by anyone's definition. And we're very conscious that property taxes and utility charges disproportionately affect people living on fixed incomes and with lower incomes. And we also found that if we're all in agreement, as I think we should be, around the need to moderate increases in taxes and fees in our town, then the only other means of supporting further investment in town facilities and services is to expand our tax base consistent with our community development plan. So what are we recommending? We hope to finalize the report in the next few weeks, and there includes three primary elements. One, somebody should be designated within Town Hall to maintain and constantly update a list of proposed town, school, and utility strategic investments, major expenditures. Second, at the beginning of every annual budget cycle, the three critical boards, Select Board, School Committee, and Finance Committee, should agree on a maximum tax and fee increase per household, both in any one year and cumulatively over 10 years. That will be used to benchmark a long-term investment plan. And third, we will recommend that the Finance Committee report to Town Meeting every year include a comprehensive 10-year investment plan that prioritizes and schedules all those major investments and major expenditures to stay consistent with those consensus limits. We will be-- all of our meetings are public. If folks have-- we hope to complete our report shortly. For those of you who may have questions or want to give us additional feedback, our meetings are posted, and we'd love to have you join us. Thank you.
The second committee report that we're hearing from tonight is the Government Study Committee, and the presenter on that is RJ Lyman.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Good evening. RJ Lyman, 41 Turkey Shore Road. I'm speaking to you now as the Chair of the Government Study Committee. The Government Study Committee was reconstituted this fall with five new members to respond to two articles from last spring's annual town meeting, putting questions for our review and recommendation to it. The first, under Article 20 last spring, relates to the method of appointment of members of the planning board. This presently is done by the Town Manager, and alternatives reasonably to be considered include appointment by the Town Manager and the Select Board jointly, appointment by the Select Board solely, or appointment by the voters by election. The second matter relates to the governance of the Electric Light Department. In that instance, the governance occurs under the auspices of the Select Board with advice and input from the Town Manager and the Electric Light Subcommittee. And there, alternatives to be considered include the Select Board solely or a separate Electric Light Committee either appointed or elected directly. On both of these matters, I expect that we will have a report to the Select Board in the next six to eight weeks, both with our review of the relevant facts and circumstances and our recommendations, which they and others may wish to put in front of a future town meeting. With that, I'd like to conclude by thanking my fellow members of the Government Study Committee, Carolyn Britt, John Doonan, Roger Lewis, and Emily Smith. That is our report. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Lyman. Article 2, Finance Committee election. For those who are not familiar, there are-- of the nine-member Finance Committee, three are appointed by this body and it's on staggered terms, and we have one opening for this meeting to act on. So I'll declare that the nominations from the floor are in order. Mr. Fay?
Jamie Fay, Nine Fellows Road. I nominate Todd Wilson, 44 Pine Swamp Road.
Do we have a second?
So just a few quick words about Todd. I think he hits all the boxes for a FinCom member. Education, experience, and character. He's got a degree from Brown University and an MBA from Harvard Business School. He has over 30 years of experience in the private sector and a variety of business enterprises, including, most recently, work with a venture capital firm in Boston. But probably most importantly is his character. I know, having served with Todd for five years previously on the Finance Committee, and then he rejoined us three months ago to fill-- Joe Burks had to step away. We really appreciate Joe's service, but Todd was able to step in in the budget season and, you know, without a pause. So I think Todd is somebody who really cares deeply about the town. I think he's appreciative of the opportunities this community has given to him and his family. I think he would like to see a way to give back a little bit. So with that, I hope you will give him your support.
Are there any other nominations from the floor? Yes, ma'am.
Can you hear me?
Go ahead.
Ingrid Miles, 18 Poplar Street. I would like to nominate Michael Schaaf, who is a member of the Finance Committee. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. I'd like to just share a little bit as a former selectman and a Finance Committee member. I am quite aware of the long-term standing interest in town affairs by Michael Schaaf. I have served with him on a number of boards. He is concerned about fairness. He has a willingness to listen to and work with different points of view. He has concern about both town government and schools as well as environmental matters. There is a recognition of the importance of town government and schools in our quality of life. But more importantly, what I'd like to close with is that creative knowledgeable leadership is foremost now, and we have ample opportunity to apply it. Michael can bring that creative knowledgeable leadership. He has served on the Finance Committee previously. I thank you for the opportunity to vote for Michael Schaaf.
Thank you. Any other nominations from the floor?
Yes, sir.
Catherine Marcus-Wazelas, Damon Avenue. And I would like to nominate Lisa Marie Cashman, who will be able to speak for herself. Lisa?
Do you wish to make some comments on her behalf?
I would like to say that Lisa has been a longstanding member of Ipswich. She's a real estate agent. She's been involved in many, many, multiple committees and very involved and very bipartisan in everything she does. I was expecting her to be able to speak after nominating, so I did not prepare anything such as that. But I think that many people do know Lisa Marie Cashman, her character, her morals, her ethics, her standing on committees. And she's quite fair and wise and very well-read in what she does.
Thank you. Any other nominations from the floor? I don't know that we heard a second for that. Did I? Okay. Any other nominations from the floor? At this time, I'd like to give the opportunity for each of those nominated to address the meeting. Please keep your comments to approximately three minutes. So we'll start with the first, which is Todd Wilson.
Todd Wilson, 44 Pine Swamp Road. Ipswich, Jamie, thank you for the nomination. No idea you felt that way about me. Thanks. So I'm interested in serving on the Finance Committee for four reasons. The first is that I love Ipswich. The second is I think that it's important to give back to a place that's given my family so much. The third is I believe that I have the relevant skills and experience. And the fourth is that I think I'll do a good job. Our family has lived in Ipswich for 26 years. We have three children, all of whom have graduated from the high school. Over our years in town, I have coached YMCA basketball, Ipswich Little League. I've been a substitute teacher in Doian, Winthrop, and the Middle School. I've been involved in two of the school overrides, serving as the treasurer of one of them. I have served on the Finance Committee for five years, approximately eight years ago. And for the last three months, I've filled in in a temporary vacancy for a FinCom member who had to step back. So as many of us know, Ipswich is facing a long list of financial challenges in the coming years, and we're going to talk about a few of those tonight. The water treatment plant, public safety building, a school building project, 3A, school overrides, annual budget challenges, the challenges of Proposition 2.5. It's a long list, and it's going to be a lot of work. My professional career was largely spent investing in and advising small businesses and helping them grow. In 22 years, I've worked with more than a dozen companies and have the knowledge and the battle scars to prove it. My work involved business strategy, operations, marketing, finance, and most importantly, people and teamwork. Because anytime you're facing the sort of challenges that we are, your most important assets are people who are working together. So it's this skill set and more that's required in Ipswich as we navigate the next three to five years. So to conclude, I think I have the desire, the experience, and the skill set to serve our town as a member of the Finance Committee. So I ask you for your vote, and I thank you for doing your part to keep Ipswich the great place that it is.
Mr. Schaaf?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. The town and the schools are facing some important challenges to which I think I can make a contribution. For 33 years, I have owned and operated a small business in Ipswich. My kids went to graduate from the Ipswich Schools. I have witnessed and participated in both town and school accomplishments as well as some missteps. Improved building management, Win 1, an ELD with direction and capacity, and an impending revision of the capital plan for Whittier Tech. On the other hand, there was Win 2, the failed New School vote, and others. Understanding how things work or don't helps when new opportunities and challenges unfold, as they surely will. I have participated in several components of the town, including the Finance Committee, the schools, the ELD, and Affordable Housing Trust Fund. Perhaps my most significant potential contribution to the Finance Committee is community development finance, my profession. I bring a different financial perspective to FinCom. I have played a key role in raising more than $1 million for community development, finance, and development. I have assisted small businesses and nonprofit organizations throughout the nation to plan their future, obtain resources to implement it, and carry out this plan efficiently. I ask for your support and appointment to the Finance Committee. Thank you.
And Ms. Cashman?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator, and good evening, everybody. My name is Lisa Marie Cashman. I live at 8 Brown Street in Ipswich. I have been a resident since 1999. Since that time, I have been a homeowner. My son has participated in the public school system, and I also have chaired a couple of committees, including the Government Study Committee. I'm currently your State Committee Woman for Senator Tarr's district, and my perspective from the finance aspect is a little bit different. We all have our strengths and weaknesses. During my time in Washington, DC, at Hill &amp; Nelson Public Affairs Worldwide, I was responsible for over $4 million in client care. That included Fortune 500 companies. I was responsible for advocating and making sure that the money spent was going in the right direction. Strategic initiatives were my skill set. We have an incredible community here. People from all walks of life love this community. I'm one of them. I would like to see this community grow in a way that is acceptable to all. When we're talking about water treatment, schools, fire and safety, and many other upcoming expenses, I'd like to ask all of you, what keeps you up at night? Because I know the things that keep me up at night are common sensibility, decisions that we have to make. We need to make decisions based on common sense. And prior to being nominated today, I sat before the Select Board and spoke to the Finance Committee as well. We need to have a good set of listening skills, which I know a lot of you have on the committee. We need to make sure that we are asking, what is the need? Is it good for everyone? And how do we get it accomplished? If it's something that people can't agree on, how do we meet in the middle? Or how do we table it until we know it makes sense? I ask you for your vote this evening, and thank you very much.
Thank you all. I'm just going to ask the IT folks, are we ready? Can we display the names? Well, I think we're tolerant of misspells if it hastens the meeting. Well, on the second one, I believe it's S-C-H-A-F-F. Let's fix the names. So let's-- This used to go a lot quicker before we had the technology. But-- That's better now. Someone asked if we could make it larger. It doesn't look like it'll be any larger. So I'll read it. Remember now, this is a 15-second voting time window. Look at the upper right-hand corner. You can see the countdown when we start. So press number 1 if you're in favor of Mr. Todd Wilson. Number 2, Michael Schaaf. Number 3, Lisa Marie Cashman. And we'll open the voting window now. And we'll display the results. What I'm reading is Mr. Wilson with 365, 66? 66. Michael Schaaf, 141. Lisa Marie Cashman, 139. This is a plurality requirement, so I declare that Mr. Wilson has been elected-- This is a plurality requirement, so I declare that Mr. Wilson has been elected to the Finance Committee. Article 3, Mr. Nyland, municipal budget. I'm sorry, Mr. Nyland, for a second. We have our legislative delegation in the room. Always have to be reminded that they're here. So, Representative Casner and Senator Tarr. So, you flip a coin as to who addresses first. And you can address from here or from the floor.
Hello, I know you have a long evening ahead of you. I'm Representative Kristin Casner, and it has been my true pleasure to represent Ipswich in, now is my second term. And I just want to say thank you, all of you, for allowing me to meet many of you and hear so much about what we need and what is so great about our community. And I'm just proud to say that, over the last year, we've done a lot of work in terms of environmental restoration work and marsh restoration, and certainly, and the House just finished our last budget, our budget for this year. The Senate is embarking on that exercise ahead of us, and we are proud to say that we're working very hard to try to bring back as much as we can to our communities, including critical funding for schools in terms of circuit breaker, transportation, and many other ways in which we know that costs are escalating. So, thank you for voicing all of your advocacy. We're also doing a lot of work around the Ipswich River watershed with the task force, and we're talking a lot about what's happening here with the clamming economy and trying to figure out and solve some of these challenges. But I'll be brief. It's been a joy working with you and alongside Senator Tarr to do everything we can to continue to have a thriving community here and ensure fiscal stability. So, thank you very much for having me, and I'll hand it over.
Thank you very much, and good evening, Ms. Moderator, and through you to the members of town meeting. I'm happy to be here with my colleague in the House of Representatives as we are working through the very complicated exercise this year of putting together a state budget for the coming fiscal year. I do want to pay note to the fact that we just did recently a supplemental budget that was intended to spend some of the overperformance dividend from the surtax on incomes over $1 million, which overperformed what was projected for it to do. And we are putting those dollars in the Senate and the House versions of that budget into transportation and education, as we are required to do. I do want to point out that we were able to amend that bill on the Senate version to put $100,000 in for the County Street Bridge, which God knows needs to be repaired and needs to be restored to functionality. In addition to that, as we approach the Senate version of the budget, which we'll be debating next week, we're also going to be pursuing $100,000 as a down payment to get started on the feasibility study that's going to be required for a new elementary school in this community, which is also something that's desperately needed. Along those lines, and something that's a little bit more statewide in nature, we did, both the House and the Senate, and our versions of the budget so far, are increasing minimum per pupil aid for our schools, our K-12 schools. You may know that in the current fiscal year, that number is $104 per pupil. The numbers right now are $150 per pupil in the House and the Senate version of the budget, and we hope to do even better than that. But along the lines that we've spoken before, it's imperative that we, for once and for all, change the foundation budget formula so that we don't have to rely on minimum per pupil aid, and this community and over 200 others that get minimum per pupil aid in Massachusetts won't be consigned to that fate for the future. So, we're going to continue to work on that. The Senate budget contains a healthy increase for unrestricted general government aid, also known as local aid, and we hope to be able to hold that number as well. Two additional quick updates. The representative made reference to the North Shore Water Resilience Task Force, which continues to be an example of how people in a watershed can work together to create sustainability and safe drinking water for the future. We're making great progress with that, and we are now approaching the decision-making stage. So, we have hired additional consultants. We are engaging a decision-making tool, and we are at the very exciting but very challenging point of making decisions about where we want to go collectively to increase the supply of water into this region and make sure that the Ipswich River watershed continues to be and improves its health. Last, I just want to give credit to the town administrator and to the Select Board for the work that they have been doing on the issue of restoring the clam beds to being open in the river so that we can bring desperately needed relief to that particular segment of our fisheries. I want you to know that the representative, I, the town officials, led by the town administrator, are taking a no-stone, unturned approach on this, and I want to say particular thanks to Select Board Member Alexson, for her work in leading this charge. But the rest of the board has been there as well, and obviously, it's a long, there are long odds here. I'm going to be totally honest with you. But we are not going to rest until we've exhausted every option to reopen those beds and/or mitigate the economic harm that has come from them being closed. That being said, I know that there's a lot on the agenda tonight. Thank you all for being here, being engaged in the life of this town. It's an honor to represent you in the Massachusetts State Senate. And Ms. Moderator, both of us deeply appreciate being able to share a few minutes in a crowded agenda. We very much appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you very much for that update. I know some of you have been in the room for an hour, and we're only moving on to Article 3. If someone knows who the moderator is, would you tell them to speed it up a bit? Mr. Nyland, Article 3.
Carl Nyland, Carl Nyland, Brown Vilav, member of the Select Board. I, Carl Nyland, Select Board Member, move to raise and appropriate the sum of $33,602,834 for the FY 2026 municipal budget to be expended as set forth in Article 3 of the warrant for this town meeting.
Moved and seconded.
So, this number you see before you represents, I think, what we would describe as a generally healthy state of municipal finance. That's evidenced by a few things. One is our continual ability to build and maintain healthy reserve accounts, which we use for various purposes to keep our budget in balance. We've been able to continue to invest in our outstanding long-term liabilities, mainly in retirement and retirement health insurance, otherwise known as OPEB. We've done a very nice job of paying down the liability of. We've been able to continue to maintain level services year over year, so the same services you would expect continuing each year after the next. And the cost of those services, the cost to all of you and to businesses, as reflected in tax rates or utility rates, are quite competitive by comparison to our peer communities. Now, they do go up, and we do understand that puts continual pressure on household budgets and business budgets, and that's something we need to continue to look at to see how we can alleviate some of those pressures. We're also able to manage our finances within the limits of Proposition 2 and 1/2, although I will note that our water rates, as you're probably well aware, have gone up relatively significantly. That's for good reason, because we're trying to catch up to improving the aging infrastructure that we all rely on for our drinking and wastewater services. If you look at your warrant book, your Finance Committee report on page 30, you will see an accounting of the budget, detail we sometimes show here, but it's a little hard to read. And if you look at the bottom of that page, you see the expenditures. The top of the page are the revenues, and just a few comments on those. On the expenditure side, expenditures are essentially divided up into two areas, what are called general fund, that is, what funds all of Town Hall Services, and then our enterprise funds, that essentially funds water and wastewater utilities. Most of those expenses go to certain services, particularly public safety and public works services, as well as benefits and other related fixed costs. That's about 75% of the costs you see itemized there. Make note of a couple of items that stand out in the coming fiscal year in terms of increased costs. One is continual increases in our sanitation contracting costs. Another is continually increasing health insurance costs. This next year, we're going to see close to a 20% increase in health insurance. And then, we always face increases for wages and salaries, and we're going through most of our contract negotiations this year, so we'll have to address those. At the top of the page, you see where those revenues come from to pay for all of that. And the general fund really gets divided up into three areas that contribute to it. The predominant one is property taxes, of course, about 80% of the revenue that comes in. As you probably know, that gets distributed and split up between the schools and the town, roughly a 60-40 split. State aid is the other big chunk. That comes in the form of what the Senator just mentioned, unrestricted general government aid, essentially flows to Town Hall, then Chapter 70 money, that's education funding that flows to the schools, and then finally, a category of what are called local receipts. It's a whole collection of fees charged, mostly, the majority contribution to that are for excise taxes, for payment in lieu of taxes, for things like state payment for state-owned land, and building permit fees. So, longer term, I said this is a healthy budget. It is at the moment. Longer term, there are challenges on the horizon. One was mentioned a few minutes ago in the description of the work by the Strategic Planning Committee, those 64 investments that we need to make, all necessary items by most measures, will have a significant impact on the town, and we'll have to be very thoughtful about how to work through them at a tolerable cost to tax and rate payers. And we also have continual pressure on the workforce, on both attracting and retaining labor. It's a very competitive market, and we are doing our best to try to keep up with that. So, this increase represents about a 3.1% increase in the budget, and the Select Board supports unanimously, and hope you will as well.
Thank you, Mr. Nyland. Finance Committee?
Yes, so, after providing detailed feedback through the busy budget season and going through...
Emily, if you could...
I didn't want to touch it. Sorry.
It moves, but it doesn't bite.
Yeah, okay, got it. After providing detailed feedback through the busy budget season, the Finance Committee unanimously supports the municipal budget presented to us through the Select Board, and we encourage you all to do the same so that on July 1st, we can start a new fiscal year fully funded. Thank you.
Thank you. School Committee?
School Committee unanimously supports.
School Committee unanimously. Any comments or questions from the floor? Mr. Kalabah?
Yes, Paul Kalabah, 8 Bell Street. One of the concerns I have about this budget is legal expenses that have been allocated. We are only allocating $180,000. We have a number of potential litigations coming up, especially if you vote no on 3A. So, I don't think that's enough. Milton has spent $380,000 to date fighting 3A, so if we end up fighting 3A in any way, then, you know, we'll need more for legal expenses. So, I would suggest adding another $200,000 for legal expenses and increasing this budget by 200,000.
Any other comments or questions? Hearing none, we'll go to a vote. This is a simple majority on the motion made by Mr. Nyland and properly seconded. Press 1 if you're voting yes, press 2 if you're voting no. And we should have a 15-second clock. So, vote now. I hear a murmuring, there was no amendment made. And the tally is? 526 to 74, on a simple majority, it passes. Article 4, FY 26 school budget. Mr. Sopik?
Good evening. I, Sasha Sopik, School Committee Member, move to take $1,600,455 from the Education Stabilization Fund and to raise and spend $39,348,604 for a total of $40,949,059 to fund the FY 26 school budget as written in Article 4.
Mr. Second?
Thank you. This year's budget was hard to build. We worked carefully, stayed focused on what mattered most, our students. There are three important things that you should know. Healthcare costs went way up. They are 20% higher than they were last year. Second, even with that, this is only a 2.8% increase over last year's budget, very small increase. Third, the override is working. When you voted for the override in 2022, we said that it would last five years. We are currently and still on track to make it last six years, a very big win. The School Committee voted 7-0 to support this budget, and I ask that you do the same.
Finance Committee?
Todd Wilson, 44 Pine Swamp Road, Finance Committee. Thank you for your support earlier, by the way. The Finance Committee recognizes and appreciates the exceptional work of the educators, administrators, and staff of the Ipswich Schools. This year's proposed school budget increase of approximately $2.4 million represents a 5.96% increase over the school budget approved at last year's spring annual town meeting. The increase is largely supported by $1.6 million from the 2021 operating override and an increase of approximately $700,000 drawn from revolving funds. To address highly anticipated budget challenges in the coming years, including federal education funding uncertainty, the Finance Committee encourages the schools to base their hiring practices, assuming flat projected enrollment, to pursue aggressive procurement strategies across the budget, and to continue to seek areas to collaborate on cost savings with the municipal side of town government. The Finance Committee unanimously supports the proposed school budget.
Thank you, Mr. Wilson. Select Board? Select Board is unanimous. Any comments or questions from the floor?
Yes.
Mr. Kalabah?
So, my one question is, I just heard Bruce Tarr say that he's gonna, the state is going to give us $100,000 for that feasibility study on the new schools, but I'm sure it's going to cost way more than that. Past studies have cost upwards of, you know, almost $1 million in some instances. So, my question is, is the feasibility study costs included in this budget?
It's a good question. It is not. Any work on, that we do in partnership with the MSBA is funded separately. This is purely for budget for our students for the upcoming school year.
Okay, but when is the feasibility study, if we get approved, slated to take place?
We kick off that process formally in July. Any funding would come to a vote here, both at a town meeting and potentially as a ballot vote.
Okay, I'm just saying that to not hold up that at all, because we desperately needed to get the new schools done, I don't know why, at this point at this meeting, if we're talking about July, we're start working on that, to not have to wait till a fall meeting to allocate funds for the feasibility study. So, that's just, that's my comment.
Thank you, Mr. Kalabah. Any other comments from the floor? If not, we'll go to a vote, and this is a simple majority. If we're ready or with the clock, you can vote now. Again, vote 1 for yes, vote 2 for no. We'll close it. So, we require a simple majority, 597 to 73, it passes. Article 5, Woodyer Regional High School Budget, recognize Carol Sullivan?
Hi there, Carol Sullivan, 3 East Street. I, Carol Sullivan, as Woodyer School Committee Representative for the Technical High School, move to appropriate the sum of $664,704 to pay town share of the ensuing year's annual operating and debt service expenses of the Woodyer Regional Vocational Technical High School.
Please.
We have currently, great things are happening at Whittier. We have 32 students there. Currently, that's four higher than we had last year. We had students applying. This year, we had 16 students apply. Nine have been accepted, seven have been waitlisted. We're, exciting things are happening at Whittier. It's a great place, and I ask that you support them. Thank you.
Any, let's see, the School Committee recommendation?
School Committee recommends 7-0.
And the Select Board? Unanimous from the Select Board? Finance Committee? Bob?
Good to see so many of you here tonight. Thank you for coming. I gotta give you just a little more detail about Whittier, although I think Linda mentioned a couple of things, and Carol did as well. The Whittier Tech is located on the Amesbury-Haverhill line. It focuses on programs such as electrical, plumbing, cosmetology, carpentry, and health assisting, among many other issues. So we have two vocational schools, the other being Essex Tech, which will come up next. The Whittier provides educational opportunity for 11-member towns. Nearby towns would be Riley and Newbury. It was recently discussed in the Ipswich News that there was in 2023 a proposal for a new building. So everybody in education wants new buildings, I guess. And they come in around a half a billion dollars. So this one was actually $444 million, and it got turned down. It was opposed in Ipswich by the Select Board, School Committee, and the Finance Committee, and opposed by most of the other member communities. Since then, there's been discussion, and I think you've heard about this, of combining with Northern Essex Community College using their campus. And this may actually open up some new funding for a new school. The original agreement with the 11 communities was made in 1967 and is considered outdated because of an unfair apportionment, okay? Some communities do a heck of a lot better. Ipswich is one that doesn't do as well. We probably pay more than our share.
Mr. Chambers, I think you're straying a bit from the motion. The motion is to approve the budget, not to discuss the merits of the Whittier new school proposal. So if you could kind of bring it back to the budget, please.
Okay, and the proposal is to fund attendance of 31 students for more than last year at the amount, as was given earlier, $664,704. This is an estimate amount. And when the final number of students is determined, in the fall meeting, we will adjust this. Finance Committee, 9 to 0 in favor, unanimous.
And the Finance Committee recommendation? Unanimous. From the floor?
Yes.
Mr. Calabah, can I, just a couple of comments. Number one, if you are in the overflow room, we're trying to keep the voting in the main room. So if you're in the overflow room, you're going to have a much shorter window to cast your vote. Because there's a time delay between the live action in this room and what happens, what gets displayed through ICAM in the overflow room. There are seats available in this room if people kind of squeeze together a little bit. I know there are a lot of people standing, but I'm guessing if we took the standees and put them in seats, that there'd still be room in this room. So, there's, there is an issue with the overflow room. The second is that when you are, when you are addressing the meeting, make sure you speak loudly and into the microphone, because the overflow room is complaining about the audio. And with that having been said, we'll move to the floor. And again, when you, even if it is your third or fourth time of addressing the meeting, address the meeting with your full name and your street address, so.
Paul Calabah, 8 Bell Street. My concern with Whittier is we know they're gonna do something for a new facility. And I'm concerned that the town is not establishing a stabilization fund to cover that capital cost, because that's on top of this $664,704. So if we did get a new agreement and we needed to pay into, we are gonna get apportioned some of that capital cost to the town that we'll have to pay for. And I don't see where we're identifying a sinking fund, because we know it's coming. And I would suggest that we, with all the other capital items that we have in our prioritization list, that this is gonna be one of them, because we certainly want to keep Whittier Tech School as part of our options. But we need to start building a fund for the capital expense now.
Thank you. Did I neglect to ask for the Select Board recommendation?
I think so, but it's unanimous in support.
It's unanimous in support, my apologies. On Article 5, any other comments or folks who want to address the meeting? If not, we'll move to a vote. This is a simple majority to approve the Whittier budget. We'll open the voting window. Press 1 if you are in favor, press 2 if you're opposed. We'll close the window. Report the vote. 531 to 71, civil majority, this carries.
Thanks a lot.
Articles, before we go to Article 6, to help people who may want to sit but can't find a seat, if you have an empty seat next to you, raise your hand. Now, if people would like to fill in, you know where to go. So keep your hands up for a second. Not too many people, not too many people moving. Thank you very much for allowing someone to sit next to you. Article 6, Essex County Technical Institute Budget. Ms. Donahue?
Jennifer Donahue, 12 High Street. I, Jen Donahue, School Committee Member, move to raise and appropriate the sum of $390,200 to pay for the fiscal year '26 assessment for the Ipswich students enrolled in the Essex County Technical Institute.
Move in second.
I'll read directly from the summary. Currently, there are 12 students enrolled from the town of Ipswich, of which four are seniors at Essex Tech. In fiscal year '26, we anticipate up to 14 students, which is two more than the prior year. The number of students and projected cost could be subject to change prior to the motion being made at town meeting. The $390,000 and 200, whoop. The $390,200 is to pay, is the estimated cost for the 14 students in fiscal year '26.
School Committee recommendation? Unanimous. The School Committee recommendation is unanimous?
Yes, it is.
Select Board? Unanimous. Finance Committee? Mr. Chambers?
The Finance Committee is unanimous. And we feel that this is a great opportunity, that we have two vocational programs for our students. And I think it all works out very well. We're happy to support it.
Any comments or questions from the floor? Hearing none, if we could display the vote slide, and when you're ready, open the window. Vote 1 to support, vote 2 to not support. Closing the window. We should have the window, 571 to 53. The motion passes on a simple majority. Article 7.
Excuse me, Mr. Moderator. I just heard from somebody in the overflow room-
Yes?
-that they are questions about whether, if they use their clickers, their votes are being counted.
They are.
Huh?
They are.
Okay, somebody needs to tell them that, because I just got one of them come up here and ask me.
Okay, if you can find that person and tell him not to worry, that'd be good. And hurry back. So, Article 7, Mr. Sopik?
Good evening. I, Sasha Sopik, School Committee Member, move to transfer the sum of $850,000 from the FY25 school budget into the Education Stabilization Fund. Thank you. After approving all this spending, I'm excited to be able to give money back for future use. This article lets us do just that. At the end of every school year, we don't spend all the money. We return what's left to the Education Stabilization Fund, or the Override Fund. Three key things. This year, we're giving back $850,000. It's about 2% of the total budget. This isn't extra money. This is careful planning, and shows that we're using override funds judiciously and making sure they last as long as possible. And the third point, this helps make sure that the override lasts longer. We planned for five, we're projecting that we're gonna be able to make it last six years. This helps us do that. The School Committee voted 7-0 in support, and I hope you will too.
School Committee recommendation?
7-0 in support.
Select Board? Unanimous. And the Finance Committee?
Also unanimous.
Do you wish to address?
Just to say that we unanimously support this article to transfer, and we thank you for saving money.
So on Article 7, any comments or questions from the floor? Hearing none, we'll go to a vote. When we reset the clock. Open the window. Vote 1 for yes, vote 2 for no. And close the window. And a civil majority required, the motion passes. Article 8, Stabilization Funding. Mr. Sapitsky?
I, Charles Sapitsky, Select Board Vice Chair, move to transfer from free cash the sum of $75,400 and appropriate, appropriated to the General Stabilization Fund. Ladies and gentlemen-
Is there a second?
If approved, the sum of $75,410 from free cash will be transferred to the General Stabilization Fund. This is commonly known as the town's rainy day fund. When approved, that fund will have $2,605,325. It remains in the fund from year to year until it's approved for use by a 2/3 vote of this body. The Select Board unanimously support this article.
Finance Committee?
Walter Hartford, 3 Maholton Drive, soon to be off the Finance Committee. We support this 8 to 0 unanimously.
And the School Committee? Unanimous. Before we go to a vote, I'd like to recognize Walter Hartford for how many years?
Nine.
Nine years on the Finance Committee. A reasoned voice, not always in agreement with everyone, but a reasoned voice, so. Any comments or questions from the floor? Hearing none, we'll move to a vote. If we can reset the clock and start the clock. Vote 1 for yes, vote 2 for no. And we'll stop the clock at 0. Record the vote. Simple majority required, the motion passes. Article 9. Transfer funds for opioid abatement purposes. Ms. Player?
I, Sarah Player, Select Board Member, move to transfer from free cash the sum of $91,956.35 to the A200 Court Judgment Account for the purpose of opioid abatement. These settlement funds were originally received in fiscal year '23 and were transferred into the General Fund from free cash during the October '23 special town meeting. Municipalities now have the option to account for this fund in a special reserve fund. In fiscal year '24, the town of Ipswich began posting all opioid settlement funds to the established special reserve account. This article moves the original funds into the town's opioid settlement fund, where they may be spent without further appropriation. The Select Board recommends this article unanimously.
Finance Committee?
We were unanimous on this one as well, with 9 to 0.
Finance Committee is unanimous, 9 to 0. School Committee? Unanimous, 7 to 0. Any other comments or questions from the floor? Hearing none, we'll move to a vote. If we can set the time clock, please. Open for votes. 1 for yes, 2 for no. And close the clock. On a simple majority, the motion passes. Article 10, Unspent Capital Funds. Mr. Doherty?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator, and through to the members of town meeting. I want to thank everyone here tonight. I know that it's a long night, and it's not the most comfortable night, but it's, we're doing important work, so thank you. Article 10, I, Michael S. Doherty, Select Board Member, move to transfer from free cash the sum of $734,333 from various capital project funds to the Capital Stabilization Fund as set forth in Article 10 of the warrant for this town meeting. Thank you. So, this one's a unique article that we haven't seen, if at all, in a long time. And basically, what it is, is for those of you that remember, back in 2021, President Biden signed the American Rescue Plan Act, also known as the ARPA Act. And what was included in that was monies towards municipalities to help with the COVID-19 pandemic. The town of Ipswich received about $4.2 million. Now, this money was specific, and it had to be used for certain items. It wasn't like UGA, unrestricted governmental general aid. It had to be used for specific items. And over the years, we used it for things like water improvement projects. We used it for some of the design on the originally proposed public safety facility. But what happened was, is we had some money left over. And that money was originally supposed to be allocated to the cost of the new public safety building. However, as I'm sure many of you know, that is currently in litigation, meaning that the town could not move forward with a contractor and could not commit the money. And one caveat to the ARPA funds was that the money had to be committed by December 31st of 2024. And if you didn't have the money committed, then you'd lose it. And we certainly weren't gonna want to lose it. So through creative thinking, the town came up with a solution. Well, we have this $734,333 left over, let's put it to good use. And that good use was paying for previously approved capital projects from prior fiscal years. And if you look at page 35 of your Finance Committee book, there is a chart that shows all of those capital projects and the money that was expended. Now, how do we pay for capital projects? We use free cash. So that money that we had allocated for those projects now has to be parked somewhere. And the idea is to park it into this capital stabilization account. Now, what that means is that we will have about 3/4 of a million dollars being moved into this stabilization account, which will then give future town meetings opportunities to allocate those funds to well-thought-out projects that will require an article to be able to release those funds and use at a future time. But what we were able- But what we were able to accomplish by doing it this way was, we didn't lose a dime of ARPA money. We got to use all 4.2 million dollars. We were able to tackle some of the capital projects earlier than anticipated, and that money is now being freed up to be used for future use. So it was a unanimous consent by the Select Board to support this transition, so that way, we have that money secured in a good place and can put it to good use in the future. Select Board's in unanimous support, and we hope for your support.
Finance Committee.
Finance Committee is also in unanimous support. This transaction will allow us to leverage these funds in the future, and we encourage everyone to support it as well.
School Committee? Unanimous, thank you. Comments or questions from the floor?
Yes, I propose to amend this article.
So Mr. Calabah from Bell Street, is it?
Eight Bell Street, yeah.
Thank you.
So these funds were basically free funds from the government.
Mr. Calabah, if you could read your amendment first.
Read my motion first? Okay. So I, Paul Calabah, Eight Bell Street, Ipswich, here, I move to amend the main motion article ten of the current town meeting warrant as follows. To reduce the transfer of the seven hundred and thirty-four thousand three hundred and thirty-three dollars from capital project funds to Capital Stabilization Funds to instead be two hundred and thirty-four thousand three hundred and thirty-three dollars, and then assign the remaining five hundred thousand dollars of leftover ARPA funds to pay for the new fire ladder truck at partial payment. That truck is 1.5 million dollars. So we could take this money right now, save ourselves a bunch of money in bond financing for that new fire truck, because fire trucks were part of what ARPA was meant to be funding for municipalities. So we have an opportunity now to put these funds immediately to use on a good project that's already been vetted and save the town some money in bond financing by using five hundred thousand dollars of these funds to pay for the fire ladder truck.
Mr. Calabah, I reviewed this amendment of yours earlier this evening, actually, late this afternoon, and I communicated to you that I rule this amendment to be out of order. It's out of order for two reasons. Number one, nothing in the article speaks to ARPA funds, so your notion about transferring ARPA funds to somewhere else doesn't work, because ARPA funds are not part of this article. The second is, this article does not warn anything about the fire truck issue, so I'm ruling your proposed amendment out of order.
I just heard from Michael over there that these are ARPA funds. We just happen to put them somewhere else besides that. They're confirmed for me, Mr. Doherty.
I think.
These are not tax-collected monies. These are monies that were given to us by the federal government.
I'll defer to Mr. Doherty to clarify.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator, and again, you threw to the town meeting. So actually, these are not ARPA funds themselves. The ARPA funds have already been spent, and it was spent on these capital items that we already had free cash allocated. The money that's being moved into the stabilization, or I'm sorry, Capital Stabilization Fund is previously approved free cash, which is not ARPA funds. But we used ARPA funds in the past to pay for these already-approved projects. So the money that's being transferred in is previous free cash money, which is previous raised and appropriated.
So scratch the ARPA funds. This money could be used now to save bonding money, and it's going to capital funds, which is what the fire truck is going to be drawing from. It's just that we're going to issue a 1.5 million dollar bond for that. So I'm suggesting a way of saving money right now by using this, these funds, and giving the fire department 500,000 dollars.
I think Mr. Doherty's response to you, Mr. Calabah, supports my determination that your amendment is out of order. Any other comments or questions? On Article ten, we'll open the voting window. Then vote one for yes, vote two for no. We'll close the voting. And there's some question that I need to have, that's being put to me before we report this vote. So up to now, you thought this was easy. We have a question that's been raised about the form of the motion, so be patient. We'll be with you shortly. We have a defect in the motion. We have a defect in the motion, which we're going to address via an amendment that's being offered. The defect has to do with, if we could have the slide with the original motion, please. You see in the second line where it says to transfer from free cash? That is not where the source of these funds come from. So I'm going to ask Mr. Doherty to re, to re, to, basically, well, we've already voted on this. I'm just going to declare that motion.
Well, let me, Mr. Moderator, if I may.
I'm going to ask that we rescind the prior vote. I'm going to ask the town meeting to rescind the prior vote. We'll get a new motion and then revoke this. So on my call, to rescind the prior vote, all those in favor of rescinding the prior vote, say one, press one. To not rescind the prior vote, press two. So is that clear, what we're doing? Let me go through it again. What we're doing is we're trying to correct a defect in the motion that was just pointed out to us.
Yes. No.
Let me just finish what we're trying to do here. We're going to, I'm asking the meeting to rescind the prior vote, the vote on Article ten, which had in the second line to transfer from free cash. That's an inappropriate account from which to make that transfer. And Mr. Doherty will, in a moment, offer a new motion to act on. So on my request, the town meeting to rescind their prior vote, all those in favor of rescinding their prior vote, and this will be the wrong title, but to rescind their prior vote, press one. To not rescind their prior vote, press two. And we'll close the voting. So on that request, five hundred and twenty-two agreed to rescind the prior vote. Hundred and six did not agree to rescind the prior vote. So I'm declaring that the prior vote on this article, Article ten, has been rescinded. So, Mr. Doherty, a new motion on Article ten, please.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator, and through you to the members. Well, folks, it takes a village, right? So thank you, Jamie Fave, for bringing this to our attention. The new motion for Article ten is going to be, I, Michael S. Doherty, Select Board Member, move to transfer the sum of seven hundred and thirty-four thousand three hundred and thirty-three dollars from various capital project funds to the Capital Stabilization Fund as set forth in Article ten of the warrant for this town meeting. So to clarify any confusion of what just happened.
That's the wrong slide.
That's not, that's not my motion. Says Michael Doherty.
Okay, they do not have, they do not have that verbiage.
So. We're only on Article ten, all right. So basically, what was pointed out to us is that when free cash, which is allocated for capital projects, is not expended right away, they go into various capital project funds to pay for the items. So what we're doing here is we're taking those funds from the capital project funds and putting them all into the Capital Stabilization Fund, because we used previously given ARPA money to pay for those capital items that were approved at town meeting.
Any additional clarification needed from Mr. Doherty before he sits down?
Good.
If not, is there a second? Finance Committee? Unanimous, School Committee? Unanimous, comments or questions from the floor? Hearing and seeing none. On this motion to transfer the sum of seven hundred and thirty-four thousand three hundred and thirty-three dollars from various capital projects, all those in favor of the motion, press one. All those against the motion, press two, and we'll open the clock. We should have closed that one. On that motion, five hundred and seventy-one to forty-seven. This requires a two-thirds majority, which means that anything over ninety-four votes in favor of it constitutes. I'm sorry, this is, this is simple majority, so it passes. Thank you. Article eleven, real property reevaluation. Ms. Alexson.
I, Linda Alexson, Select Board, move to transfer from the overlay surplus the sum of eighty thousand dollars to the General Fund to fund a revaluation of the real and personal property in the town. Thank you. Every town in Massachusetts is required to conduct a five-year property revaluation, and Ipswich has its turn during FY twenty-six. Approval of this article will authorize the transfer of funds from the overlay surplus account, which the balance is approximately 367,000, to pay for this process. The Select Board unanimously recommends this article. Thank you.
Finance Committee.
Dana Miller, Six Abbott Lane, the Finance Committee unanimously recommends support of Article eleven. This is a requirement to be performed every five years, and this fund is required to remain in compliance. Thank you.
School Committee recommends unanimously. Comments or questions from the floor? Hearing none. All those in favor, when the voting window opens, signify by pressing one. And all those opposed, by pressing two. And the window should close. Report the votes, please. Five hundred and fifty-two to eighty needing a two-thirds majority, the motion passes. Article twelve, other post-employment benefits funding. Mr. Doherty.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator, through you to the members. Article twelve, I, Michael S. Doherty, Select Board Member, move to raise and appropriate the sum of one hundred and four thousand five hundred and twenty-seven dollars and to transfer the sum of nine hundred and nine thousand eight hundred and ten dollars from free cash, both to the Other Post-Employment Benefits Liability Trust Fund.
Is there a second?
So this is an article that we see every year, and the way I look at it is that it's an investment into our future. Because when we have talented men and women come to work for our community and do that public service, when it's time for them to retire, we have certain benefits that go beyond their employment that we're responsible for, the large one being healthcare. So what this does is that this gets us closer to the goal line of having that unfunded liability fully funded. Now, right now, as it stands, the two sources of money that we're going to be taking from to put in this year's amount puts in a little over a million dollars, which is a healthy amount. The overall unfunded liability to date is around 36 million dollars. And we currently, in that fund, have almost eleven, which is about a little over 30%. Now, that may sound small, but that is actually a very good step in the right direction, especially compared to some of our neighboring communities. We in Ipswich have a very unique way of tackling this. There's two ways that we do it. We take 0.25% of the overall salaries from the prior fiscal year and 25% of free cash over a million dollars. Those two figures give us the amount of money that we contribute every year. And what we do on every year gets us closer to that moving goalpost. And the reason why it's a moving goalpost is because as we continue to have more employees, as we continue to have more retirements, that number increases. But we continue to go further than what we see in increases, which means that we will be close to fully funded at some point. So what we ask for you tonight is to keep setting the precedent of investing into our future, investing to pay for those post-employment benefits for those who have served our community. And with that, the Select Board unanimously support this article five to zero, and we hope to have the same support from town meeting. Thank you.
Finance Committee.
Finance Committee unanimously supports.
And the School Committee unanimously supports. Any comments or questions from the floor? Hearing none on Article twelve, we'll go to the voting. Window is open. Vote one for yes, vote two for no. And we'll close the window. 561 to 60, a simple majority required, the motion passes. Article 13, The Annual Capital Plan. Ms. Alexson.
Thank you. I, Linda Alexson, 19 Juniper Street, Select Board, move to transfer from free cash the sum of $3,516,028, to transfer from the waterways, the sum of $93,000, and from the library trustees, the sum of $80,000, for a total capital spending of $3,224,628, to fund the capital budget as set forth in Article 13 of the warrant for this town meeting, and that any funds remaining unspent be transferred to the Capital Stabilization Fund. Thank you. So, a great deal of time was spent this year working with municipal departments and the schools to review requests for vehicles and other equipment and infrastructure projects, normally costing $10,000 or more, and with a life expectancy of five years or more. Initially, some were identified as being able to wait another year or two without consequence to town operations, and they've been delayed accordingly. We have a comprehensive five-year capital plan in place to ensure that we are responsibly meeting current and future needs of the town. And in your Finance Committee book, on pages 37 and 38, you will see the list of requests for this year. They range from much-needed public safety vehicles to highway equipment, and the list goes on. But I assure you, it is all necessary and needed for this year. Additionally, we are researching programs for future years to better track the progress of equipment replacement and other projects so that this information is readily available each year as these capital requests are considered. This year's capital plan reflects prudent spending for necessary equipment replacement, facility repairs, and other projects in the coming year, and the Select Board unanimously recommends this article. Thank you.
Finance Committee?
The Finance Committee unanimously supports this article, as these capital expenditures are the key strategic investments for the coming year. We encourage you to support it as well.
School Committee?
Good evening. Sasha Sopick, School Committee. There are three specific projects I was asked to highlight for you this evening. First, the modular classroom for Winthrop. Some of our students are actually learning in the hallway, because we don't have enough space in our classroom. It's noisy, it's distracting, it's unfair, and they deserve better. Second, new high school bleachers. The old bleachers are worn out. They've, we've used them for many years, they've exceeded their life expectancy, but now they're a safety concern for our students. Third, the sprinklers. Not only is this a safety issue, we've had many burst pipes causing, obviously, the damage, but have been particularly costly. The School Committee voted 7-0 in support of this, and I ask you to do the same.
And the School Committee recommendation is unanimous? 7-0 of support, unanimous? Any comments or questions from the floor?
Yes, Paul Calabah, 8 Bell Street.
Thank you.
So, one of the items in here is having $75,000 for the tip design. Well, I hope that's not to finalize or create some plan, because we have yet to have the feedback sessions and also the input from the state on the designs that were put forward. So I don't know what this design plan money is being put towards, because I don't believe the citizens have ever agreed on a design. So I'm questioning, what is this $175,000 for?
Mr. Crane?
Hi, good evening. So, the Transportation Improvement Program, the TIP, that the Central Street, Five Corners project, is being developed as a part of, is a multi-year design process, and $175,000 is to get to the, through the next phase of design, to stay on target for, I think, FY '27 or '28 award date from the Commonwealth from MassDOT, if the project continues to advance. And I think the Select Board is, will be reviewing the current state of design before moving forward and expending additional design funds. But if the decision is to move forward the project, then we will have the design funds in hand to continue to work on what is really a much-needed project, which includes more than just traffic improvements, there's infrastructure and drainage and other things. And so, to keep our spot in line on the TIP, we need to make sure we have funds available to advance design.
So, can I add to this? So this is for, you know, those of you not familiar, the state was asked to do a redesign down at Five Corners, and there was a lot of negative feedback from citizens about the design, of which we had a session with the state. We asked a lot of questions, and we gave them a lot of input, and we've yet to hear back anything on our input, or whether they could make the design changes as we suggested. So I would hope that the Select Board, before taking any action on any kind of a design for Five Corners, is going to have a community session where they discuss the design and get our input and approval of that design.
Thank you for your advice.
Mr. Moderator. I have one, I have one other thing about the capital plan.
Is it, is it a question? What's the nature of your further inquiries?
It's just simpler to say it. So again, I'm concerned there's no sinking fund for the wittier new school in this capital plan, because that's certainly a capital expenditure that's coming down the road, and it's unplanned for and not funded, that I could see.
Okay, thank you for your additional advice. Any other comments or questions?
Mr. Moderator, can I just make one clarification to the meeting through you? The Mass Department of Transportation, again, the TIP is an annual program, and there's a queue of projects that go through to get fully funded, construction by state. In this case, it's about $14.5 million for this project. MassDOT had a design review public hearing, and they did issue a design review public hearing report that I believe is on our website, certainly it's on MassDOT's website. So, there has been discussion about the design, public comments were received, and those are all available for people to see online. So I just want to make sure that it's clear that there is information out there about the design.
Any other comments or questions? Yes, ma'am.
Marley Marcus from Damon Avenue. I'm wondering why we would be spending such, to me, an exorbitant amount of money for a project that may or may not happen. I'm wondering why you are not seeking the easier, far less expensive way of taking care of the supposed traffic problem. And it's not Five Corners, it's Market Square. The proper designation for that area is Market Square. If you take a look at what the proposal is down at Market Square, the rotary, to me, should not even...
Can we ask that the question, the question that you posed be answered? If you can restate the question, we'll get an answer for you.
The question I have is why are we spending this amount of money where a simple solution, a less costly effective solution, such as merely having people slow down and have the speed limit enforced by our police? It costs nothing, or maybe a gallon of paint to redo one section at the foot of Town Hill, making it a one-channel road?
Thank you for your question.
Has those been studied? It shouldn't cost this amount of money to fix the problem.
We're trying to get an answer to your question.
Mr. Moderator, through you. By seeking this appropriation, it keeps the town in a position to have $14.5 million in state transportation funding available to it for this project. So, if you don't appropriate the money, we can't be at least eligible for those funds. And so we are recommending that you, we do this appropriation, but we don't have to expend until we have further dialogue with MassDOT, and that is the Select Board's plan that they talked about throughout the capital planning process. If you saw any of the meetings, they were clear that they aren't going to spend, spend the money until they have greater clarification on the design concerns. But if we don't do this, then we are out of place, and we'll lose the opportunity for, like I said, it, there are improvements beyond just the traffic that are much needed down there. So it keeps the project alive, and this project, I think, has been 11 years and counting in the making. So it's important to keep it going.
Good. Thank you for the answer to your question.
I have one more question.
Please.
Was this project approved at a town meeting or a ballot somewhere?
I, I'm going to step in here. This is not a project where, the town meeting is not being asked to accept a particular project by this article. They're simply asking to appropriate $175,000 to continue a process that the Select Board have represented would be brought to the community for their comment, suggestion, adoption at some future time. It is not a commitment to anything particular, other than funding of being available at some point, if that answers your question.
I'd like to amend the Article 13, if I could. I would like to propose that we accept Article 13 as planned, minus the $174,000 for that traffic. We're not going to decimate Market Square and Historic Town Hill for something we do not need.
All right, let me stop you. One is, we always have trouble with amendments that are verbalized as opposed to written. So what I'm understanding is that you are moving to amend this article by striking $175,000 item.
Yes.
Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay, that's the motion. Is there a second to that motion?
There is.
Okay, we have it moved, and we have it seconded. Now, before you leave the microphone, would you like to address why the meeting should support your amendment?
My, I think I'm making a important point, where you're trying to spend $175,000 on something that is a maybe. We have such pressing other needs that that $174,000 can go towards. You have not, I believe that the traffic problem, once you fix that Green Street Bridge, or at least have a, you'll have all that, that traffic that's now has to go downtown Hill, because us on the east end cannot get anywhere without going downtown Hill now. We have no other choice. Fix the bridge, appropriate, I would rather have that money appropriated to go into putting in this barrier or stop sign, a flashing light for the first car approaching from either end to go first. That's point number one. Point number two, I have a real problem with the disregard of the historical value of Market Square, Town Hill, the North Green, all of that. That is, that is my problem. Why do you need, I don't think that you need to spend all that money, $14 million, or however it is, to think maybe you're going to put, maybe you're going to put a light in, maybe you're going to put a stop sign in, maybe you're going to put a rotary in and destroy the whole area, when you can simply have the policemen do patrol the area and issue citations for people going over the speed limit. Costs nothing. That is, that is what I'm asking you to support.
Thank you very much.
Can I leave now, Jim? I'm sure you'd want me to. Can I leave? Can I leave?
Oh, I didn't mean to bind you to the microphone.
But I love it, it's my friend.
Mr. Spitsky, do you wish to make some comments in terms of, for the motion? Again, we have a motion before the meeting to amend this article by striking $175,000.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Charlie Spitsky, a member of the Select Board. I rise to oppose this article. I rise to oppose this article, and, you know, and it's, I'm sorry, this amendment, okay, for a couple reasons. First, there's many of us on the Select Board who do not like the design for the, you know, reconstruction of Market Square. And, you know, we don't believe that all possible options of improving that intersection have been considered, and we believe that there's more work that needs to be done in that regard. The second issue is that this involves a lot more than just moving traffic through Market Square. It involves drainage issues, it involves, you know, sidewalk issues, and many things like that, okay? That even if we don't want to redesign the hill, you know, and the intersection to the degree that it's been proposed, we still, you know, would have to improve, you know, the drainage and, you know, other issues that, you know, we have a plan for. But the bottom line is, is that if, you know, if we can't move forward with, you know, a design that's amenable, you know, to the citizens and to us, then we simply wouldn't spend $176,000. You know, for example, I think that if the state said, "You can't do anything unless, you know, we don't want to move forward and won't approve any more expenditure of funds for the project, unless you redesign Market Square in its totality as been proposed," then chances are, you know, we may very well withdraw, you know, personally, I believe, that at least we would withdraw from the project. You know, I've, you know, obviously lived here a long time. I think it's an iconic area of our town, it identifies it, and it, you know, has heritage, as well as safety issues that I think can be addressed in a more sane manner. So I urge you to, you know, at least allow the board to move forward and have the discussions with the state about improving the design, as well as, you know, what's needed relative to the infrastructure in the road itself, which is badly in need of repair. So, thank you.
Okay, we have three people at the microphone, one in the middle with a question.
Julia, is it, this is on, can you hear me?
I'm sorry, yes.
It's Julia O'Leary, 23 Pleasant Street.
Yes.
I have a couple of questions. My first question is, can town meeting do a line item veto like that and strike a specific allocation of funds from a warrant article? Because I thought that in the past...
Okay, I can answer that quickly.
We can?
The motion says, as set forth in Article 13 of the warrant, the Article 13 is very detailed, so town meeting can take any one of those line items and remove it. So the amendment is in order.
Okay, so my second question is, if the amendment is in order and that line item is struck...
Yes.
What, what impact does that have on the project moving forward? And if the project, if that line item isn't struck, does it mean that there's definitely wish we...
Okay, the question, Mike, is for process and procedure of town meeting.
Oh, okay, so I'll just move into that question.
It's not, not for, not for the substance of the article. If you want to ask your question, I will ask you to choose your side. Yes, sir.
John Doonan, 158 Topsfield Road. I call the question.
Okay, motion to move the question is in order. It's not debatable, so we'll go immediately to moving the question. Moving the question is to act on the amendment that's been proposed. The amendment that's been proposed is to strike the $175,000 line item from the proposed capital budget. Now, if that amendment passes, we have to go back to the main motion, because the dollar number will have changed, and then we'll vote on the main motion. So, any question about what we're doing here?
Yes. We're only voting on moving the question.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry. That's why I have counsel close, so that when I make mistakes, it doesn't have to ripple up to me, it comes directly... ripple up to me, it comes directly to me. This is on moving the question. So moving the question means that we're going to move to vote on the amendment. So, if you want to continue debating the amendment, then you vote no on moving the question. If you want to stop debate on the amendment, you vote yes. Any other comments or questions? I'm going to...
We're not voting the amendment.
We are voting to stop debate on the amendment. All right, so we'll go to a vote again.
Do you want to mean again?
Okay. If you, the, the question has been called, which means that we immediately go to a vote to stop the debate on the amendment. And, and when we stop the debate on the amendment, then we move to vote on the amendment itself. So this is going to be a three-vote thing. First, vote to stop the debate on the amendment. Second, to vote on the, if, at some point, we're going to vote on the amendment, we're either going to continue the debate or we're going to move, we're going to vote on the amendment, and then we're going to go to the main motion at some point tonight. So, on the, on the motion to move the question, if you wish to continue debate, vote no. If you wish to stop debate on the amendment, vote yes. And you can vote now. So the mo, the debate on the motion is terminated. So now we've moved to vote on the amendment. And the amendment is to strike $175,000 from the list of projects in Article 13 of the warrant for this town meeting. So there's no, no further debate, we're going to move directly to, to the amendment, which is to strike the $175,000. If you wish to strike the $175,000, vote yes. If you do not wish to strike the $175,000, vote no. And so you can vote now. Sorry, I didn't pull the vote. Sorry. So we should close the window, please? Okay, by virtue of the 506 to 211, we're going to go to the main motion. And that debate on the main motion can continue unless you, unless it's the sense of the town meeting that we should go to a vote. I don't see anyone wishing to extend debate on, on the motion, so the main motion, which appropriates the full three million, or the, the full amount of money that was requested and is outlined in your, in your warrant booklet, is what we're voting on. If you're in favor of that capital plan, one for yes, two for no. Close the window, please. The main motion passes. We'll move to Article 14.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. And again, through you to the members of town meeting, Article 14. I, Michael S. Doherty, Select Board Member, move that town meeting take no action on Article 14 of the warrant for this town meeting.
Moved and seconded, Mr. Doherty.
Thank you. So, before I explain where we are, let me explain how we got here. So in 2020, the Water Department, through the charge of a previous water commission, hired a company to go through all the different assets within the Water Department. That included horizontal assets like pipes in the ground and vertical assets like buildings. And one of the things that really stuck out in that assessment was the water treatment plant. Because the water treatment plant, which has a 25-year lifespan, was entering at the time, I believe, year 34. It's now entering year 37, meaning it is well past its useful life. So as a result of that, in 2021, we came to town meeting to ask for $1.5 million for a feasibility study to look at a new water treatment plant. Well, as we all remember what was happening in '21, we had inflation due to COVID, we had supply chain issues, we had chip shortages, and everything was askew when it came to pricing. And the figures that we had were from pre-pandemic figures, and they came back with a water treatment plant of 25 million. Then AECOM, which is the company that we hired to do this project and put forth the recommendation, came back at their 10% design phase and said, actually, those figures were pre-pandemic figures, the real figures are $35 million. So for the past two years, while AECOM has been going through the motions of putting together this plan, we've been working on the figure of $35 million. Well, just a week and a half to two weeks ago, AECOM came back with a 30% design phase, earlier than anticipated, by the way, which, in hindsight, I'm glad that we found out a week prior to town meeting than a week after. But that 30% design phase says, actually, the construction costs and everything in the project, it's going to skyrocket to 50, five zero, million dollars, a 42% increase. Now, although this was a very sobering conversation to have with AECOM, I guess the one positive that I looked at it is that this isn't unique to the water treatment plant project, it's not unique to the Water Department or even Ipswich. We are seeing these double-digit increases in project costs for municipal projects all throughout the Commonwealth. Our neighbors are experiencing it in our communities next to us, and we're experiencing it here in more than one occasion. Now, I'm not going to get too much into the weeds on the cost drivers behind this. A couple of the highlighted things were electrical went through the roof, more site prep work money was needed, a generator was needed, et cetera. But so where does that leave us? Because we have an article here that looks to approve for a $34 million, $35 million ask. And then we have a ballot question next week that asks for a $35 million ask, when we need 50. So the commissioners, along with the Water Subcommittee and the Water Department, decided that for tonight, we're going to take no action on this article because we need to digest the new numbers that came before us. We have been working very tirelessly to make sure at the Water Department that the rates do not skyrocket, because we know that household budgets don't increase in that fashion, and we need to stay true to that. So the point of taking no action is to come back with, to you, with a new figure for you to approve. Now, here's one more caveat. We got accepted into the SRF funding program, the State Revolving Fund. Now, this isn't a grant, it is a loan program, and it's a reduced loan program. So instead of getting a 5% loan through a typical municipal bond, we have the opportunity to capture a 2% or 0% loan for the first $10 million, which annually equates to about $200,000 a year, or $6 million over the life of the loan. So we're talking about a significant amount of money. In order for us to be a part of that program, which we were already invited into, we need to appropriate the full amount by June 30th of this year, which is why, when you walked in tonight, you may have seen this flyer. And this is where you guys are supposed to get out all of your phones and calendars and mark this date, because on Monday, June 16th, at 7:00 PM here in this auditorium, we are going to be having a special town meeting. And at that special town meeting, one of the three articles is going to be the article where we ask for the appropriation for this money. Subsequently, a week after that, on Tuesday, June 24th, we will be having another special election to solidify that in a ballot vote. So again, the purpose of this is to postpone for right now, let us come back to you at a special town meeting after we've done all of our due diligence to make sure that the numbers are correct, after we've done our due diligence to make sure that the rates are not going to spike, which is our mission, and hopefully we'll get approval then. The Select Board, as Water Commissioners, were unanimously in support of this motion, and we ask for you to do the same. Thank you.
Finance Committee on the motion to take no action?
We unanimously support that.
Finance Committee unanimously supports to take no action. School Committee unanimous also. Comments or questions from the floor? Hearing none on the motion to take no action on this article, all those in favor will press one, all those opposed take plus two. You, Article 14, take no action, passes on a simple majority. And again, just to emphasize a point that was made, this particular article will appear on the warrant for a special town meeting, which is being warned for the 16th of June and a special election on the 24th of June. That will be by ballot on the 24th of June. Now, when you go to vote next week...
Yeah.
...you'll notice that there is a question associated with this project on that ballot. That is of no consequence at this point, because we've taken no action on the warrant article. The warrant article triggers the ballot vote. Since no action has been taken on the warrant article, the, the ballot, the ballot vote is of no consequence. Article 15, debt exclusion for a fire truck, Mr. Spitsky.
I, Charles Spitsky, Select Board Vice Chair, move one, to appropriate the sum of $1,500,000 to purchase and equip a ladder truck for the fire department, including the payment of costs incidental or related thereto. Two, to raise and appropriate by authorizing the treasurer with the approval of the Select Board to issue bonds or serial notes under the provisions of Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 44 as amended. And three, to see if the authorization of such debt shall be contingent upon the passage of a debt exclusion ballot question to exempt from the limitations of total taxes imposed by General Laws, Chapter 59, Section 21(c), Proposition 2 and 1/2 amounts required to pay the principal of and the interest on the borrowing authorized by this vote.
A second.
Ladies and gentlemen, this article proposes the purchase of a new fire truck under the provisions of Prop. 2 and, Prop. 2 and 1/2 debt exclusion override. During the Select Board's budget hearings, the fire chief made a compelling argument for the necessity of this piece of apparatus for the fire protection of the citizens and businesses of the town. The Select Board supports this article unanimously. I would now like to yield to Chief Perisi of the Fire Department to explain to you, the citizens, why this piece of equipment is essential for our fire protection.
So Chief Perisi, please.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Thank you, Mr. Moderator, and good evening. For the record, my name is Paul Perisi. It is my privilege to serve as your fire chief. Thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. I'm here this evening to ask for your support for Article 15 to replace our aerial ladder known as Truck 1. Next slide, please. Truck 1 is a 1997 KME 102-foot rear-mounted aerial device. It's currently 28 years old and will be 30 years old or over 30 years old when, and if and when this article is approved and the truck is delivered. It has the equivalent of 153,000 miles on it currently. Truck 1 has served our community well, but it's at its end of life for a fire truck with a primary responsibility of lifesaving activities. Over the last two years, we've spent approximately $50,000 in maintenance items and repairs. Some of the parts were difficult to find and some of the parts had to be fabricated in order to put the truck back in service. This truck will have a 100-foot aerial device, a large telescoping ladder similar to the, the one that we currently have. And I've often been asked, why do we need a 100-foot ladder if we don't have 100-foot tall buildings? And the reason is because we need that ladder not only for height, but also for reach. Next slide, please. You'll see in this picture, this was a second alarm fire a couple of years ago at the condos just next door here, and you'll see our aerial device is positioned as close to the building as it could get, but because of construction equipment, dumpsters and so forth, it couldn't get that close. And so therefore, we needed not only to get to the peak of that roof, but we also needed to have reach there as well. Ground ladders wouldn't have been a good opportunity here because of the situation where the, where the, the valley of the roof would not give us a good purchase to put a ground ladder there. Next slide, please. This fire was a chimney fire on Appomattox a couple of years ago out in the neck. Here, we, you can see we use the aerial device primarily for reach. It's extended approximately 60 to 65 feet from Appomattox Road, but essentially horizontal as opposed to using vertical reach. Next slide, please. Truck 1 carries various tools and equipment that does not fit on our pumper's, including technical and specialized rescue equipment, long portable ladders, chimney fire equipment, salvage equipment, rotary forcible entry, and roof saws and long pipe poles for high ceilings. Next slide, please. One thing that I found fascinating is that we've actually had a truck company in Ipswich for well over 100 years. In fact, this picture was dated in 1894. And although it's not an aerial device, it does carry many of the same long ladders and pipe poles that we carry today. They're not the same ones, but they... Next slide, please. Some of the questions that came up with, that during the hearings, both with the Select Board and with the Finance Committee, included, what would we do with the old truck when we get the new truck? And that is, it does have some minor residual value, and so that's a town manager and Select Board decision that will likely be made closer to when the new truck arrives. We may look to send it overseas as a donation, we may look to scrap it for some residual value. I was also asked, when will we get the new truck? And we actually have our name on a truck that's currently in, in progress on kind of a handshake deal pending this vote and the vote of next week, because the manufacturers know that if we don't buy this truck, then somebody else certainly will, because currently there's a four-plus year build time for these trucks. If we get approval tonight and, and again next week, we will be looking at the fall of '27, so about a little over two years to get our truck. And if, what if we defer the purchase of this truck? There is a pretty significant escalation factor. It's much higher than the 4% that most other things are going up. In fact, fire truck costs have skyrocketed over the past few years for a variety of reasons that doesn't need to be get, that we don't need to get into today, but just know that fire truck costs have escalated very quickly, not only the, the cost, but ob, obviously the lead time to get them as well. And then have we considered a used vehicle? And we, and we have, in fact, considered a, a used vehicle. In fact, as a fire chief, in, in, in my past community, I did buy a, a used fire engine. I used, I bought it for the specific reason of a reserved vehicle. I don't think that, my professional opinion, buying a, a used piece of fire apparatus for this community for its primary purpose of lifesaving activity is the right move for our community. This, this apparatus has been in service for, by the time we replace it, 30 years. The members of the department have, have treated it well and taken care of it well, as we will with the next truck, and hopefully that one will last just as long. If it does pass tonight, as we talked about, it... If it does pass tonight, as we talked about, it will need a positive vote next Tuesday at the election as well. With that, I appreciate your support and your indulgence tonight, and I ask for your support. Thank you very much.
So Select Board recommendation is?
Yeah, the Board of Select supports this purchase unanimously. We urge your support, both here tonight, which requires a two-thirds vote, and then next week at the ballot box, which requires a simple majority vote. It is critical that we outfit our departments so that they can save our lives. It's as simple as that. Thank you.
And the Finance Committee?
Ken Swenson, 449 Line Brook Road, member of Finance Committee. Finance Committee unanimously supports this. Have approved this article, increase the average single-family tax assessment by $16.64. I urge you to approve.
And the School Committee unanimous? Thank you. Comments or questions for the, from the floor, please? Yes, sir. Please.
Bob Hagerty, 82 High Street. Been in Ipswich about 21 years now, moved up here from Malden. Love this town. I'm a 31-year veteran of the Malden Fire Department. I drove a ladder truck for over 20 years. Everything the chief said about the 100-foot ladder is absolutely accurate. If you can't get anywhere near the building, 100-foot ladder gets to maybe the third or fourth floor, which, we don't have fourth floors, but 100-foot aerial is, that's the standard for the fire service. So several things he talked about, the $50,000 in repairs in the last two years, it's not just a $50,000 item. If you think about this, something breaks, the alternator, the starter. That ladder truck is now out of service until it's repaired. Can you find an alternator for a 30-year-old truck? It might take a week to come in. For that week, your families are at risk. The ladder trucks are life safety trucks. It's, the engines, the pumps are the ones that, they put water on the fire. The ladder truck does all the other work. They're the ones that get your kids out of their bedrooms. They're the ones that get you from the second and third floor. They're the ones that do, I like to say, we do all the work at the fire. The pump companies don't do anything. We have purchased, I'm also, I'm now the captain, I'm the training and maintenance captain in Malden, so I know what I'm talking about. We have purchased used apparatus, again, like he said, for spare pieces, for backups. You don't want a used piece of fire apparatus as your primary frontline piece. You've got to vote for this. It has to go through. This is, it would be dangerous to go with a 30-year-old truck. And we actually just ordered a ladder truck from the same company they're getting theirs from. It's going to be here in five years. So getting one in two, I was talking to him earlier, I was shocked that he's getting one in two years. That's amazing. Five years, we're going to wait for a ladder truck. We're paying more than that for. So I encourage everybody to vote for this. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Mr. Calabah.
Paul Calabah, 8 Bell Street. So I would like to amend this article.
Please state your amendment.
So I'm going to change it from what I submitted to you since we had that issue with item number 10. So I, Paul Calabah, of 8 Bell Street, Ipswich, hereby move to amend the main motion, Article 15, at the current town meeting, as follows. To reduce the appropriation to purchase and equip a new ladder truck from $1.5 million to $1 million, and to transfer $500,000 from the capital stabilization fund, which we just deposited $743,000 in, which is a legitimate fund transfer and funding source for this so that we can save on bond interest.
So, Mr. Calabah, you and I are having quite a night. The amendment you've offered, I'm going to rule out of order because the source of funds was not, the source of funds was not in the original article. The only source of funds mentioned in the article is a bond for a million and a half, so I'm ruling that amendment out of order. Are there any other comments or questions? If not, are you ready to go for a vote? If so, on the motion made to borrow a million and a half dollars and to have it excluded from Proposition 2 and 1/2 as a debt override? All those in favor, press one. All those opposed, press two. And it needs two-thirds. I'll take a minute here just to sort of give a little bit of a town meeting 101. As moderator, I encourage anybody who anticipates making a motion to come to me before the meeting, just go to the town website and find the moderator, he's there. Come to me, explain to me what your amendment, what you would like to do with your amendment, and whether I like your amendment or don't like your amendment, I'll work with you on it to get it in a forum so that at-town meeting, I don't have to rule it out of order. So again, work with me, it makes things a lot easier. Article 16, Nuñarezco, Mr. Nyland.
Thank you. Carl Nyland, 34 Brownville Avenue, member of the Select Board. I, Carl Nyland, Select Board Member, move one, to appropriate the sum of $4,553,866 to pay costs of energy efficiency improvements to be made pursuant to an energy services contract with Nuñarezco, including the payment of costs incidental or related thereto. And two, to raise this appropriation by authorizing the treasurer with the approval of the Select Board to issue bonds or serial notes under the provisions of Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 44, as amended.
Mr. Nyland.
Okay, so if this article sounds familiar, it should. We talked about this last year at the town meeting. As you may recall, an article was put before the meeting. It was approved here, and it failed at the subsequent ballot vote. The Select Board received a significant amount of feedback on that article and on the vote, a variety of feedback. There were many questions about the language that was used on the ballot, fair amount of confusion by some people about what they were voting for. We also received many questions about the article itself and the composition of the project. So after a lengthy debate and discussion, the Select Board decided to significantly revamp the project and bring a new version back to you for consideration. That's what we're going to talk about tonight. So I'll get to the vote in just a moment. We'll talk about that. So what hasn't changed about this, and what you see on screen here, is the purpose of the article. So it focuses on a couple of items. One is reducing energy use in our aging buildings, utility buildings, school buildings, and the town hall, and through doing that, reducing the costs associated with operating those buildings. It also helps us to achieve our goals set for carbon or greenhouse gas emissions reductions in the town, which you may know we're lagging behind, and we have to do some catch-up work on. It accomplishes this by using something called an energy services contract, a well-established process that bundles together a set of improvements, does them in rapid fashion so that you can get to realizing the energy savings as quickly as possible. So the improvements, maybe a little hard to read here, but are listed. These are called energy conservation measures. There's a series of them, like weatherization in this building, insulation improvements, replacement of the heating system at the town hall, and other improvements, either for energy savings or for water use reduction. What you don't see on this list are the items that were removed, and these are substantial. There were two other, two items included in the previous article that aren't now part of the project. One was plans for a solar panel array here at this building out in the parking lot. There were a lot of questions about that. We've pulled that out of the project. The second was LED light replacements at the two elementary schools. The argument was made, we hope to replace those schools in the near term, so we shouldn't spend the money on those improvements. So we move on to the next slide. So this project went through a process, a competitively bid process, to be awarded to a company to perform this energy services contract. As you know from the last article, we selected a company called Nuñarezco, who's been in this business for a very long time. It's a big, well-established company, been doing this for about 40 years. They conducted what's called an investment-grade audit of all of our facilities. From that, they laid out a set of recommendations about the improvements that could be made to save either energy or water in those buildings, and that's what that investment list represents. Those energy savings start to get realized as soon as we complete the projects, and as I mentioned, be done in about a 12-month period, so fairly rapidly. And the ongoing costs of maintaining and operating those improvements are also included in the project costs. Nuñarezco, the company, will also do an annual audit to verify that the savings they say we're going to get, we actually realize. They have to do that every year for a 20-year period. So the new project was originally, last year, $7.9 million cost. It's now been reduced to just a little north of $4.5 million. Among the, of that $4.5 million, we know today that about $560,000 in grants will be received that will subsidize that cost, and we are applying for an additional up to $575,000 through what's called a Green Communities Grant. If we get that, then that would bring our total offset in grants to a little over $1 million. The energy savings, so we make the energy improvements, we save money on energy and water use in the buildings, we'll pay for, the costs that come from that, we'll pay for approximately 80% of the borrowing of this project. So the net cost of the town over the 20-year period is estimated to be about $851,000. To say it another way, a $4.5 million project, $4.5 million improvements, will cost us $851,000. That's a pretty good deal. Most significantly on this slide, the funding for this project, which was something we got a lot of feedback on, will now come entirely out of the budget. It will not raise taxes to pay for it. We'll pay for it out of energy cost savings and money that's already been appropriated through the budget process. We'll move to the last, next slide. We also have put in place a policy, we wrote last fall, that governs the management of this money, that assures that we audit this, the savings every year, we capture the savings in the budget, we deposit those into a fund, and we make sure that those funds are used exclusively to pay off and down the debt. Now, quick benefits, go back one slide. The benefits maybe are obvious. We reduce the consumption of energy and water in the buildings. That saves us money. It helps us to get after our, not to try to achieve, but to get after the carbon reduction of goals we agreed to some years ago. It avoids us having to do emergency replacements. Most of these projects are things we're going to have to do in the next couple of years, and we'd rather do them on a planned basis than have to do them when they fail, particularly systems like the heating system at the town hall. It avoids having to bid out and the project cost associated with pursuing each project independently. Much more efficient to bundle them together and do them all together at one time. And the real kicker to this is the guarantee that comes with this approach. The company Nuñarezco guarantees the energy savings, and if they fail to meet their marks, they have to make up the difference. They also guarantee the construction costs. So if we have cost overruns, they have to make up the difference. If we don't pass this, on the risk side, we will have buildings that will continue to be inefficient, less efficient than they should be. We have buildings that will continue to be uncomfortable to be in. One feature of the energy improvements at the town hall is that we would then be, with these improvements, 100% heated and cooled, and that's a heavily used building. Be nice to have air conditioning in the whole building in the summers for all the uses of it. We wouldn't have guarantees on the project costs if we don't pass this. We'll continue to increase costs to you, the taxpayer, and again, we'll have to suffer with continued poor facilities conditions. So, one last slide. I want to note the approval process we'll go through. The borrowing amount that we revamped the project to does not require a ballot vote by law. You may know something called the ban for bylaw that requires borrowing all for a certain amount to go to a ballot vote. The previous ask of $7.9 million was over that threshold, required the ballot vote. $4.5 million is under and does not. But the Select Board thought it was only fair, since we brought it back to you, to follow the same process we followed the last time. So we will have both a vote here tonight and a ballot vote next week at the polls. If either one of those fails, the measure will not pass. So one quick note on this, there's always a little bit of a wrinkle to these. When you look at the ballot language, which is in your Finance Committee report, it's on page 52, if you want to follow along, you'll see the language. We did improve the language to make it clearer. It clearly says what it is, that it's for Nuñarezco, so I think we've cleared up, will clear up any questions about the purpose of the ballot language. However, legally, because it is not legally binding, we are required to print that on the ballot. So you'll see that it says at the bottom, "This question is non-binding." But the Select Board has pledged that it is. Regardless of that language, we will abide by the vote. We voted on this in public session. We affirm it again tonight. If it fails at the ballot, regardless of what the language says, the measure will not be approved. So I hope you support this, second go at this project, the Select Board unanimously supports.
Thank you, Carl. Finance Committee?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Leah Crespi at 5 Cottage Street, member of the Finance Committee. The Finance Committee supports this article unanimously. The new Nuñarezco project has been greatly reduced in scope. It no longer includes the solar carport at the middle high school, and the LED lighting for the elementary schools has also been removed. Everything left in this project's scope are line items that your tri board and your town and school administrators agree we need. Going through one firm to complete everything in the project list makes much more financial sense than pursuing the projects one by one. We will have the same suppliers for all the materials, and we will be able to get the workers' access to the building all at the same time to complete the work. This maximizes our efficiency in terms of both time and dollars spent. Additionally, Nuñarezco is guaranteeing us a certain level of savings from their upgrades. Every single year for the next 20 years, they will look at the town and school's utility usage, and if we're not saving as much as they said we would, they will reimburse the town for the portion of our utility bills over that threshold. That's an amazing guarantee. This article gives us a chance to check necessary things, offer maintenance backlog, and save us considerable funds over time. Please support this article tonight and again at the ballot in a week.
School Committee? Kate Elliott?
Good evening. Good evening. Good evening. Okay. Hello. Kate Elliott, 273 Argilla Road, member of the School Committee. The School Committee also unanimously supports Article 16. The new Nuñarezco project provides needed infrastructure upgrades and fixes longstanding issues with minimal risk. As previously stated, this article has changed from the fall. It no longer includes the solar photovoltaic carport and does not include LED lighting upgrades to the elementary buildings. The improvements, such as weatherization and an upgraded energy management system in this building, will result in more stabilized heating and cooling at the middle school, high school, and upgraded, and upgrades to LED lightings in this building is a project that was already underway. In other words, these are projects we need to do and are an important part of maintaining our school buildings. In addition, these projects will be completed within a year of starting and will allow us to avoid the extra cost of replacing equipment on an emergency basis when things fail. It is a cost-effective, no-brainer solution with no tax impact. I urge you to please support Article 16.
Unanimous support from the School Committee? Yes?
Yes.
Thank you. Comments or questions from the floor?
Paul Calabah, 8 Bell Street.
Paul, welcome.
Welcome. So I'm fine with the majority. So, I'm, I'm fine with the majority of what's in this thing, except for the gas-to-electric conversion. I've heard from a number of contractors that we could replace the existing gas boiler system for way less than three point whatever million dollars it is that Naresco wants to do for a conversion, which will be very disruptive. So, I, what I'm suggesting is that I'd like to make a motion to remove the gas-to-electric conversion portion of this from this article and proceed with the rest of it.
Paul, you and I are having quite a night.
As always.
Your, your motion is out of order because the article is not specific in terms of line items. So it's kind of the opposite.
There's an attachment of line items to the article.
It's counter to what the capital plan was. The capital plan listed things line by line by line. This is silent on the exact makeup of, of what is being proposed. So, I ruled your amendment out of order. Yes, ma'am?
Hi, my name is Sarah Coyle. I live at Ten Manning Street. I'm here to ask for your support for Naresco. I'd like to just highlight some things that haven't quite been noted. When reference was made earlier to what Naresco did when they first arrived in Ipswich, they came in and they examined fifty buildings, from the perspective of being professional engineers with a great deal of experience of how to manage airflow, energy, and water in aging municipal buildings. It's really tempting to be able to say, oh, well, this is just like replacing something in my house. But there is a reason why professional engineers exist, because they know how to do engineering that makes buildings of this size and complexity work. So I'd like people to take that into consideration when they're thinking about what did Naresco offer the town of Ipswich when they came in to do an audit and then provided a series of recommendations, and then offered to use their extensive experience with equipment and labor contracting to offer it to act as a general contractor to get this work done in a year's time. These are all really valuable things that are kind of intangible. It doesn't really show up when you sort of think about, are we doing gas-to-electric conversion? Are we doing weatherization? But the skills that we're buying with this contract are also very important, because Ipswich on its own, if it could have done this, probably would have done this. The reason we're going to somebody who can do this is because the town is not able to make these repairs on its own. Not that people don't work hard, not that they don't know what they're doing, but sometimes you need outside help, and that's what this is about. So I will ask for your support for Naresco tonight. You've heard a lot about what's in the package, you've heard a lot about what's been taken out. A great deal of effort has been put in by town employees and the volunteers who support this. So, hopefully you'll take that into account, too. Thank you.
So I wasn't quite done, Mr. Moderator, and you switched over.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Mr. Calabai?
Paul Calabai, Eight Bell Street. So, I, I think this was mentioned at the last meeting, we have a whole menu of capital items that need to get funded at the town, as you're well aware, something that may increase our tax rates up to a hundred percent over the next five years. So, this is a nice-to-do item, some of them are a nice-to-do item. Again, I, I believe in most of them, but the thing is, we have choices, and we have more important projects to fund than this. We will achieve, hold on a second, we will achieve our goals for carbon reduction when we build our new schools and our new public safety facility, because those are going to be energy efficient. So the fact to do this gas-to-electric conversion now is really not needed to meet that goal. And again, it's more costly to do that conversion than it is to stay gas.
Thank you. When I tap my pen, I'm not doing anything other than nervously tapping my pen, so I didn't mean to... Question? Yes?
Yeah, it's an administrative issue. I have been recording all of the votes, and roughly the amount of time in which the vote time exceeded fifteen seconds, and the votes that came in in that period between the fifteen seconds and when it was actually stopped. And I just want to run down this, the numbers for you. The least votes that we got this evening was six hundred, and that was on Article three. This goes up as high as six ninety-two in the last vote, six eighty-six, seven seventeen in part of the thirteen. So there's a huge range of votes that are being recorded. And I think in some cases, it's votes that just didn't come in, or people who are, you know, moving around. In the last case on Article fifteen, thirty votes came in after the fifteen-second timing was called. We are coming up against two extremely important to the town and potentially controversial votes. And I think we cannot fail to get this number right this time. And so I ask you to make sure that maybe we go to thirty seconds instead of fifteen, or something to make sure that all of those are counted.
The, I'll remind the meeting that what you voted for early was to advise me as to an appropriate window. I've already received a couple of comments, and I'm not, I'm not as happy with how this window voting is going as I would like to be. And one of the suggestions was that on, and let me say one other thing, virtually every vote we've taken tonight has been just dramatically one way or another. So the whole notion of whether we're exactly counting hasn't been too much of a concern to me. However, we are coming up to a couple of, of issues that are, that are likely to be narrowly decided, or certainly much more narrowly decided. And I take the admonition of keeping the window open for a longer period of time, taking that under advisement. We'll see how that goes. Now, let's get back to, to the motion. Since I see no more folks lining up with a negative microphone, I'll, I'll accept one more pro, but in the interest of sort of moving the, the meeting along, if everybody's going to speak pro, let's...
This is a question.
Well, questions usually belong here, but anyway. No, that's fine.
Hi, I, Carl, last year, same, same topic, I had the question.
Name and address, please.
Oh, Michelle Hodge, Timberton Lane. I had this question last year, and I wanted to know what other schools, towns, had used Naresco, because I wanted to look them up, talk to them, find out, did they really do it in a year, or did you have cost overrides? I wanted to find out. When I asked you what other towns had done it, you said, well, there have been other towns, but you never told me which ones to call. I never found out. So, you say, you say that Naresco guarantees energy savings, but remember that the high school that was built here in nineteen ninety-nine, they went bankrupt? So I want to know, I want to do my homework and find out how I know that these guys are actually going to live up to everything you said, by talking to the people that they've been in business with for forty years.
Well, you said you had a question. I misunderstood. You have a question on the article.
So what side do you want me on?
I'll ask Carl to answer your question.
So, what, what I'll do, I apologize if I, if I didn't send you the information. I thought I had cited some of the schools. What I will do, and I can make it available to anyone that wants to see it, we received when we bid the project, in the detailed response, there's a comprehensive list of reference implementations, including schools and other buildings that Naresco has done projects for, including detail about how they lived up to the guarantees that were built into the contract. I will provide, anyone that wants to see it, a list of all of those projects. We can probably post it to the town website, and you're welcome to contact any of those other towns.
I want to see the solvency, because you can't guarantee they're not going to go bankrupt like the guys that built this high school does.
Can't guarantee that, and that's true.
Okay. Thank you.
Good. If, if all we're going to hear from is the pro, if you can make this the last one and make it quick, I think the sent, the meeting probably would like to go to a vote.
Okay. I'm Deborah Johnson, Nine Pine Street. I asked for everyone to vote yes on Naresco. I've worked in this, in the energy efficiency field in many different aspects over at least twenty years. The technology is incredible now. We have these, the incentives, we have the financial setup to only win, and Ipswich can fix the historic buildings so that they work beautifully. Our students can be in comfortable, wonderful places to learn. We got to do it. So, vote yes. Thank you.
Thank you. We have a question?
A question, question.
Yes.
Joe Chikotelli, Forty-seven Howe Street. Just a quick question. I'm familiar with town procurement laws. I just wanted to know if Naresco was the low bid on this job, and if they were, who the other bidders were, and that should be information that should be shared with everybody.
Again, I'm, I'm asking for questions to be about the process or procedure, if you have a question about the article, Joe.
Then I'll go to the other microphone if you want.
That's fine. We'll, we'll take your question from where you are, where you stand.
Okay. Right. Thank you, Joe.
Mr. Moderator, I'm happy to answer the question from our award-winning water plant, treatment plant operator, Joe Chikotelli. Congratulations again, Joe. So, to, to move this, to move the project along, or to, to develop the project, I should say, there was a qualifications-based process, which is also part of the procurement laws, where we, the town went out and received proposals from different companies based on qualification, not price. And then once we, and then once a group of, of volunteer reviewers went through those qualifications proposals, they selected Naresco to then perform the investment-grade audit. And so that's, that's how we got to here, but it was really an RFQ, not our procurement of like, it wasn't bidding construction, it was qualifications-based audit services. That would then lead to this phase of, of the construction.
Can I add one little piece to that, just to answer your question? As I recall, this is from memory, we shortlisted to three vendors. I believe the other two vendors that responded were Siemens Corporation and another company called Amoresco. And I also recall that the Naresco bid wasn't the low bid, but it wasn't the high bid either. That's right. Yes.
Okay, sir.
I'll be very, very quick. Nick Kraus, Eleven Masconomet. I had a speech written. I will not read it. Just wanted to...
It doesn't include move the question, does it?
No, no questions, just a statement. I'm in support of Naresco. I hope the rest of you will vote in favor as well. I supported the Department of Defense doing energy consulting services for about nine years. DOD heavily uses energy savings performance contracts, including energy, or including ESCOs like Naresco amongst others, including Amoresco as well. I've worked with Amoresco in the past, actually. They're all reputable, reputable. They've all conducted significantly larger projects to this, than this, so they're very, very well-suited on the technical side, and then also on the guaranteed energy cost-saving side to fulfill the scope of work. I think it's a great deal, and it'll be unfortunate to miss it. Thank you.
I would like to move to a vote. Is there a, is there a sense of the meeting that we should continue discussion?
No.
Hearing that, I will move to a vote. So, on the vote, on the motion made for Article sixteen, we'll open the voting portal. Vote yes by pressing one, vote no by pressing two. So this requires a two-thirds majority, and it is two-thirds. Yes, I'm reminded that the select board, they, they pledge to honor the ballot vote, even though the ballot vote is not required. They pledge it, honor it, so depending on how you feel, register your support or non-support at the ballot next week on Tuesday. Article seventeen, to amend floodplain district zoning. Toni Morad.
Good evening. Toni Morad, One O Six Central Street, Chair of the Planning Board. I, Toni Morad, Ipswich Planning Board Chair, move that the town meeting take no action on Article seventeen of the warrant for this town meeting. Thank you. Just to clarify what this was, so in January of twenty twenty-five, the town of Ipswich received official notification from FEMA, the Federal Emergency Management Agency, that a routine about ten-year flood map, floodplain map update process for Essex County and Massachusetts be completed. As was done in two thousand fourteen, the Commonwealth of Massachusetts through the Department of Conservation and Recreation requested the town of Ipswich through the planning department propose a local floodplain district zoning bylaw amendment that is consistent with the updated FEMA floodplain maps. However, when we went to put the article together, some language was missing from the original, what was submitted and then approved in the warrant. So, what was happening was, we had included the maps, but the sections and definitions were not included. There was insufficient time for us to go back and add them, and there was concern that we would not be in compliance by the July eighth deadline. So at any rate, we did approve, have an approved contingency plan where we were going to, tonight Article seventeen was just going to approve the maps, we were going to add some regulations to include the definitions, and then in the fall town meeting, we were going to do the rest of the, of what was supposed to be updated. Luckily, we are having a special town meeting on, what is the date? June sixteenth, where now we will be able to do it all in one fell swoop. So, we had a plan that we would have just been able to do a piece of it tonight and a piece of it in the fall, and now we're just going to do it all together on, on June sixteenth. So, that's why.
And the planning board recommendation is?
So the planning board is unanimous recommending to take no action.
Select Board? Unanimous? Finance Committee?
No action.
Unanimous? And the school committee? Unanimous? Any comments or questions from the floor? Hearing none. On the motion to take no action on Article seventeen, we'll open the voting window and vote one for yes, vote two for no. Motion passes. Simple majority. So we're going to move to Article eighteen. It's going to be moved by Peter Elliott. Before he moves the article, let me tell you how I want to proceed on this. This is the first article this evening that has split support from the select board, from the finance committee, and the school committee. Pretty unusual situation. One of the things that was requested of me, and I granted that, was whether the minority position could address the town meeting. And I said yes. So, we'll have the motion made by Mr. Elliott, and he'll, we're going to hear from the select board, which has a split, the split support of three to two. We'll hear from both the majority and the minority persons. Then the finance committee, which has a split vote of seven in favor, two against, and we'll do the, we'll hear from the majority, and we'll hear a minority report. The school committee, I believe, is of five to one? Six to one? And we'll hear, we'll give them the opportunity for both the majority and the minority to address the meeting. Then we're going to hear from the Ipswich Housing Partnership, and then we'll move to floor debate. So, stick with us. And here is an instance where, you know, we're, we're... And here is an instance where, you know, we're already anticipating like, something like 6 or 7 speakers. Please, mind the time, take what you need, and you don't have to take all that's allotted to you. So, please. Mr. Elliott?
Peter Elliott, 273 Argilla Road. I, Peter Elliott, member of the Ipswich 3A Task Force, move to amend Ipswich Protective Zoning Bylaw as printed in Article 18 of this town meeting warrant.
Second.
Please.
Sarah Player, 45 Mile Lane, Select Board, 3A Task Force.
All right. Slides going. Last year, the 3A Task Force developed a proposal for the October 2024-
Speak up, please.
It's as high as it gets. Okay.
Yeah, you have to be very friendly with the mic.
I'll bend over. Last year, the 3A Task Force developed a proposal for the October 2024 town meeting that complies with the state's 3A legislation. That law requires MBTA communities like Ipswich to create a compliant zoning district near public transit that allows multifamily housing with site plan review instead of special permit. During that town meeting's consideration, a motion was made to postpone action until the State Supreme Judicial Court, SJC, ruled on the validity of the legislation. The town meeting motion carried by a single vote preventing a vote on the proposal itself. In January, the SJC ruled that Section 3A is a constitutional and, is constitutional, and that the state attorney general has the right to enforce the law through legal action and by withholding discretionary funding for communities who are non-compliant. The 3A guidelines have also since been properly promulgated and are final. Ipswich has been given until July 13th to adopt a compliant bylaw.
When we developed the 3A zoning, we first looked at the Ipswich Community Development Plan, the CDP, which was adopted by town meeting in 2022. The CDP calls for housing and development to be concentrated in walkable areas, including the town center and near the train. New development is sustainable, and it pays special attention to the town's historic character, natural green spaces, walkability, and access to services. The task force used this vision as a guiding principle for how to approach development in Ipswich. The more we learned about 3A, the more we realized how well 3A supports this uniquely Ipswich planning approach. 3A, just like our current zoning, encourages housing and mixed uses in the town center, where we have infrastructure like town water and sewer. We know Ipswich residents need diverse housing options as they move through life. Current Ipswich seniors need smaller, accessible, and economical units as they downsize. Young adults need workforce housing as they struggle to stay in their hometown. Many Ipswich families can't afford astronomical housing costs and need other options besides single-family homes. This slide shows our current zoning in the area where we are proposing 3A. These areas already allow and currently have multifamily housing. Unlike many communities subject to 3A, including, excuse me, including nearby towns, Ipswich's current zoning largely meets the requirements of 3A relative to multifamily housing development. The proposed 3A overlay does not change the current zoning, which will remain in effect. Instead, it provides an alternative development path that is consistent with the desired development pattern for the town center. Property owners in this area would have a choice to use current zoning or a 3A overlay if they wanted to modify their property. But zoning is not compulsory, so if you never want to change your property, it remains as is. As you can see on the slide, Ipswich's proposed 3A multifamily overlay district, or MOD, is made up of four sub-districts that overlay the existing zoning. These areas all allow and are currently almost entirely multifamily. Three of these sub-districts, 1, 2, and 4, are in close proximity to the train station and contain most of the downtown, while MOD 3 overlays a portion of Colonial Drive, a high-density residential area composed entirely of multifamily housing, and located about a half a mile from the train station. MOD 4 mirrors the heart of Ipswich's central business district, Market Street and a portion of Central and Hammett Streets, composed primarily of mixed-use buildings. This sub-district mandates that new development under 3A be mixed-use, which requires a commercial use on the ground floor and a residential component elsewhere in the building. This helps keep our downtown vibrant by supporting a commercial base and providing patrons and a workforce to our commercial businesses. As this slide indicates, all projects considered under 3A must conform to our zoning bylaws' dimensional regulations and are subject to additional developmental standards. The other key element of this review process under our 3A proposal is site plan review, which applies nearly all the same existing development standards. For example, traffic flow and safety, adequacy of utilities and infrastructure, impact on neighborhood character, and requires a similar public process to special permit. In doing so, it will largely achieve the same results as special permits. Why is this the case? Quite simply, because the planning board uses the special permit approval not as a backdoor way of prohibiting multifamily development, but rather as a way of influencing and enhancing projects. Site plan review will be used the same way, and the planning board has successfully used this process to review projects for nearly 40 years.
Dimensional regulations establish limits on building height, number of stories, and building setbacks, among others. These restrictions are the same for both our current zoning and for 3A. Thus, the buildings that can be built under 3A can be no bigger or taller than what we can build today under current zoning. There are guardrails. 3A zoning requires a density of 15 units per acre. This may sound like a lot, but it is actually less dense than what is allowed by current zoning. The buildings shown on this slide are landmarks in our town. These familiar buildings far exceed the density requirement of both 3A and of our current zoning. A density of 15 units per acre under 3A is yet another guardrail, since it is less than the, what our current zoning allows. Unlike many communities subject to 3A, including neighboring towns, Ipswich's current zoning largely meets the requirements of 3A relative to multifamily housing development. In fact, the number of multifamily housing units that 3A demands is actually fewer than what could potentially be built under our current, current zoning. To be clear, the num, the total number of multifamily units allowed under 3A zoning is 200 fewer than what is allowed under our current, existing zoning bylaw. Yet another guardrail that our Ipswich 3A zoning puts into place. As noted, the 3A zoning proposal provides additional guardrails to development. This has been achieved by elaborating, elaborating on existing development standards for, for projects approved under 3A relative to site design, building arrangement, and principal facades. Doing so helps us ensure that new development remains consistent with the character of the town center.
The purpose of 3A zoning proposal is to maintain a diversity of housing types, provide affordable housing, and enhance the residential base that supports commercial uses in the town center. While the state did not mandate affordable housing, Ipswich pursued affordable housing under this law and chose to maximize affordability. The affordability component requires that developers create between 10 and 15% affordable units for rental and for-sale units to households with incomes that range between 60 and 80% of the area median income. To be clear, multifamily housing by design is less expensive to build and therefore more modestly priced to rent or buy than single-family homes. We've also heard concerns from residents about 3A's impact on the water resources. Ipswich has been making measured investments and improvements in our aging water infrastructure, and has been participating in a regional task force to explore solutions to expand our water resources. We also asked our water director, who stated that over the past 15 years, the town's population has increased by 3%, while the town's water consumption has decreased by 12% in that same period. So, the population increase has not resulted in an increase in water consumption. She also pointed out that the type of development also matters when discussing impacts. She stated that single-family homes with lawns, gardens, and pools have a bigger impact on the town's water supply than compact multifamily housing, which is more efficient. We've also heard resident concerns about 3A's impact on schools. Ipswich school enrollment is not projected to increase over the next six years, according to the latest enrollment projections from NezDak. A report housing the Commonwealth's school-aged children studied the impact on housing on schools. The investigators found no association between increased housing unit development and school enrollment. The data does not indicate that 3A will impact school enrollment. Some folks have argued that the taxes generated by new housing will not offset the demand of services. So we looked at the data. A UMass Donahue Institute study titled "The Fiscal Impact of Mixed-Use Housing Developments on Massachusetts Municipalities" found that housing developments did not have any measurable negative impact on public services in their municipalities.
All right. Grants supplement our municipal and school budgets every year, and they help us to meet our town needs. 3A compliance is linked to funding eligibility for many state grants. In the past six years, Ipswich has received $2.7 million in grants. If 3A is not adopted, we will be ineligible for similar grants in the future. Noncompliant communities are incurring expensive legal fees. Why would we knowingly risk any law, walking into a lawsuit? What services are we willing to sacrifice to pay for lawsuits? Ipswich has until July 13th to comply with 3A. Without compliance, we will be ineligible for many state discretionary funds. By not complying with 3A, we would forego needed improvements which would negatively impact town services and likely raise taxes. It's likely letting, it's like letting free money fly out the window. Our community needs funds like these. We don't want to risk future grants for opioid recovery, like we got for $150,000; for safe drinking, like we got for $493,000; for infrastructure and green communities grants, which we need for the Naresco, for over $400,000; or even the latest DEP funds for $370,000. The town of Ipswich should not knowingly risk future grant money from the state. The state continues to add additional grants and loan programs to the list of discretionary funding to which 3A noncompliant communities lose access. It's a moving target. It's real money at risk. These grants have a significant impact on what our major capital investments. Our legislators have warned us that MSBA funding for a new school is at risk. The school committee's historical data suggests that a new elementary school may cost close to $150 million. At a 40% reimbursement rate, that puts $60 million at risk. These investments have high price tags, so losing these grants would put these projects out of reach or a tremendous burden on taxpayers. Please recognize the financial risks that 3A noncompliance creates. Noncompliance is costly. Almost done. 3A meets our own goals from the CDP, which includes the following recommendation, quote, "Amen zoning in and near town center to allow well-designed multifamily with administrative site plan review." You can read the rest. Ipswich is unique, not like other communities. What we can say is that 3A works in Ipswich. And then we have this part. Why now? It is critical to approve 3A now so that the town can continue to take full advantage of the state's discretionary funding. In the end, a vote for 3A does not mandate construction. A vote for 3A does not exceed dimension requirements of our current zoning. A vote for 3A does not exceed current zoning unit capacity. But a vote for 3A maximizes grant funding opportunities, support the town and school budgets, and capital infrastructure. A vote for 3A requires affordability and increases housing options for Ipswich residents. A vote for 3A increases the vibrancy of the town center by adding mandatory mixed use and supporting town businesses. Finally, we have heard talk that we should continue to wait and see how 3A plays out in other legislation before we vote. We've heard that we should press the state to allow our current zoning to comply with 3A, or that we should implement yet another zoning idea. Why? Just so we can say that we, we did it ourselves? We did do this ourselves. We are all Ipswich residents that created the CDP document that should, that stated we should be doing this very thing. We are Ipswich residents that are on this 3A task force and created this 3A zoning district all with input from those, those residents, a lot of whom are in this room. Why would we wait to implement something that we need now? And why would we risk any negative ramification? Please vote, vote for 3A and support Ipswich.
Thank you. So the Select Board supports 3 to 2. Sarah, your presentation ran almost 14 minutes. If the majority wishes, I think out of fairness, we need to be mindful of that. Please.
Sarah Player, 45 Mile Lane, Select Board. I believe the Select Board should work to help its citizens. Our Ipswich seniors, our young adults, and our young families are struggling with cost and availability of housing. They're having a hard time remaining in the town that they love, that we all love. 3A supports Ipswich's efforts to become a more affordable community through the creation of long-term, income-restricted affordable housing, and by providing modestly priced homes for our residents as they transition through life. I believe the Select Board should work to help its businesses. Our business community needs to maintain a local workforce and a steady stream of patrons. 3A zoning in the business center will be mandatory mixed use, which requires commercial use on the ground floor and a residential component elsewhere. This helps keep our downtown vibrant by supporting our commercial base. I believe the Select Board should help guide Ipswich forward while maintaining the town's character, history, and traditions. Forward progress can seem scary at times, and we should approach change in a deliberate and thoughtful way. This 3A proposal was drafted by Ipswich residents, for Ipswich residents, and by design, it closely aligns with our current zoning in the exact areas where we currently have multifamily housing. I believe the Select Board should position the town for success. We should ensure that the town can maximize state grants to help support our services and major capital investments. 3A compliance ensures the town will have full access to state funding to help keep our financial stability. Help us position the town for success. The Select Board recommends this article by a vote of 3 to 2, and we encourage you to support it.
Thank you, Mr. Darling.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator, and through you to the members of town meeting. So, here we are, seven months later, discussing 3A again. What do we know that has changed? So the SJC has made a ruling, and whether we agree with that ruling or not, the ruling is that 3A is constitutional. We also know that the Attorney General's Office does have the ability to litigate communities that don't comply with the mandate. And we know that in conjunction with the Treasurer's Office, certain grants or loan programs have the ability to be jeopardized. And, you know, taking politics and putting it aside, I can understand holding hostage planning-related grant money for a planning-related amendment, but to hold public safety, which I know has been rolled back, but that was the initial intent, to withhold education money, to withhold mental health money, our tax dollars for a planning article? I don't care who is in the seat of the administration. That's just not right. But let's, let's dive into some of the things that we still don't know, which is the question I asked back in the fall. Why now? So, we know that our legislators, including our own delegation, have filed legislation to amend 3A to help communities like Ipswich that have a good plan not be subject to the threat of grants just because we don't want, like, the word "by right" as a component of the zoning. We don't know what that outcome's gonna be, that legislation. We know that our neighboring communities have filed litigation against the state about the unfunded mandate component of 3A, which, when you build more, it's going to cost more. It's gonna be more people on roads. It's gonna be more people utilizing public safety services, more people using sewer infrastructure. That is going to happen because one of the objectives of 3A is to reduce local barriers so that developers can come in and develop. And I really do appreciate the notion that housing is a human right, because I agree with that. And coming from a generation who is struggling to penetrate the housing market, that means a lot to me, and it means a lot to my generation. But unfortunately, this narrative that 3A is going to be this magical affordability component is not the case. And the reason why is twofold, okay? The original language of the law, the three paragraphs, doesn't include affordability. Then they said, okay, you can put down your own affordability component, which we did. We said we want a 15%, like we have with our own already-existing zoning. But what happened? The state came back to us on the rental side and said, has to be 10%, because we did a study, and if you make it 15, it's gonna decentivize developers to come in and do the projects. That, to me, doesn't show efforts about affordability. That, to me, shows trying to give developers an easier way into a community to build housing, because this is about quantity and not about the quality of housing.
Let me interject for a second. I'm fairly tolerant of- I'm fairly tolerant of participating with applause at a town meeting. I've stated it to others who've urged at the town meeting to be quiet. He described it as, this isn't a high school basketball game. Well, neither is at a cloistered nunnery. So I don't mind some reaction, but I think the reaction I'm hearing recently is testing my own limits. So I'm going to ask you to let the speakers speak. If you have to uncontrollably make some kind of a response, you won't get thrown out of the meeting, but be courteous to everybody.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. And I will wrap up my portion very momentarily. You know, I guess the question, it really does boil down to this. There could be consequences if we don't pass 3A before the July deadline. What I find funny is that both the governor and the treasurer, to this day, have yet to determine exactly what is going to be at risk. And why is that? Because they want the fear of the unknown to shape your vote tonight. If they were serious about this, we would know in black and white what was up and what was down. If they were serious about affordability, they would be more open to having higher percentages for affordability, which they struck down. We have spent decades in this very chamber crafting the zoning to see that we want fit for our community, because zoning is a local option. And I'm telling you right now that we need to sit here and wait. I'm not saying that 3A isn't something that we're going to have to adopt at some point, but why would we make major zoning change, which this is, by eliminating the special permit and putting in the "by right" component? Why would we change and make a major zoning change without knowing the rest of the unknowns? We have a special town meeting coming up in October. We can call a special town meeting, as we're going to be doing on June 16th, to talk about water. My point is, is that if the legal bills start stacking up and the grants start getting ripped away, and the pressure from the state comes down to us, we have the ability to use a carefully crafted overlay district that the 3A task force did do a good job forming to implement. But my point to you is, why now? Let's wait. Let's find out the unknowns, and then move forward. I am part of the minority vote on the Select Board. The two members who voted against, I urge you to vote down 3A tonight. Thank you.
We'll now move to the Finance Committee.
May I ask a question?
Yes.
Thank you. So the presenters got 12 minutes. They went over. How much time did the boards get to present?
What I'm trying to do is basically apportion the time on the basis of the support. In other words, a three-to-two support from the Select Board. I tried to give both of them approximately three-to-two ratios of time, which I think they had pretty close.
Okay. I just thought a number of minutes, you should give equity to each board.
Which is what I'm...
Okay.
Well, I'm trying to get...
If it's five minutes per board, let's try to stick to that.
I appreciate your comment, but we have, from the Finance Committee, we have a six-to-two split vote, so I would expect that the minority opinion would be no more than one-third of what the majority is. So, Mr. Fay?
Jamie Fay, Nine Fellows Road, Finance Committee. I just want to correct for the record that the Finance Committee position on this article is six in favor, two opposed, and one abstained. Unfortunately, I just found out this afternoon that a complaint had been filed with the State Ethics Commission regarding the participation of one member of the Finance Committee on this issue. I was only informed of this late this afternoon, so I'm going to do my best here to pitch it. But it is unfortunate that an individual who donates her time and effort on behalf of the town, who has chosen to live and raise her family downtown, near but not in the district, is being deprived of an opportunity to participate. Unfairly, I would say. So, Michael, to answer your question, why now? I think there are three reasons to vote for this article. First, as was stated earlier, because it is consistent with our community development plan. This is exactly what our community development plan says and directs us to do. It says amend your zoning in and near the town center to allow well-designed multifamily or mixed-use options by right. We said that to ourselves. It wasn't because of state mandate. We developed it. We adopted it. We voted overwhelmingly at town meeting to support that plan. So that's the first reason we should do it now. The second reason, it's the law. I mean, it's state law to do this. And sometimes people forget that we only have the power that we're given by the legislature. All of our zoning powers are granted by the state. We only have as much local control as the state allows us to have. So there are lots of things that we're not allowed to regulate under zoning, like churches and educational institutions, and now accessory dwelling units we can restrict but not prohibit. We're not autonomous. We can, however, decide where to accommodate these uses, and our 3A task force has done, as Michael admits, a great job of deciding the very best location to accommodate the as-of-right housing that the state has said we must include in our zoning laws, and we said to ourselves should be in our zoning laws through our community development plan. Third, there are the penalties, and they're real. They're not theoretical. The Finance Committee report has a list of discretionary state aid, which is at risk, which for this year alone is nearly $700,000 in direct grants. And the potential, you know, we talked about, and Michael talked about, the low-interest loan for the water treatment plant. We have the potential to lose $10 million in low-interest loans, which will cost as much as $6 million over the life of the project. What are we thinking? If we said we should do this in our own plan, and it's the law to do it, and we are putting tremendous financial resources at risk, what are we waiting for? Let's do it now. We urge your support.
Mr. Moderator?
Question. Dana Marshall, Six Month, Leeson Avenue. About the water ban? Question about the water ban?
Questions have to do with process or procedure about town meeting, not with the content of the article. So thank you.
Mr. Moderator, a point of clarity on a statement that was just made, and I think it's very important. It's very important. It's very important that this be brought up.
What I indicated earlier in some other discussions that we had, some pre-meetings on this, is how do you deal with a statement that is made by one individual and another individual disagrees with that statement? I said that I would not be the truth squad, but that I would expect that if someone heard something they thought was wrong, that as they approached the pro or the con microphone, that they would address their notion that facts presented are not facts true. So, I'm not going to recognize you, Michael. Sorry. I'm not going to recognize you. I'll let some... Okay, the question was what? I'll tell you what. I'm not going to recognize Michael for the purpose of correcting what I think he believes is a factual misrepresentation. I will let someone from the floor address that issue if they choose. Mr. Miller?
Dana Miller, Six Abbott Lane. The opposing vote on the Finance Committee was based on three different factors. The first is 3A makes no provision for funding the increased demand on town services that would likely be imposed on the residents of Ipswich. We're talking things like water, electricity, police, fire, and most importantly, schools. Services that we are wrestling with to fund even today. It's a question I asked during the hearing, whether, you know, there was any studies that were done. Same question I asked last time. There's no studies. So we're not being given the data of what the impact would be. The second item has to do with affordable housing. 3A that we're voting on tonight makes little provision for affordable housing, and it could be circumvented by developers, so really it would not materially improve the town's availability of affordable housing. The other opposing vote was also related to affordability, the affordability language that was briefed earlier. And there was a concern about the implications of Ipswich changing that language in our motion, but it's different than what the other towns are voting on. And so that vote felt like it would be better if Ipswich had kept the same language that the other towns are voting on. So that was our opinion. The third item that I just want to mention is that 3A, upon being approved here, we've seen it with other things that the state passes down to us, where the terms of it are changed later by the state, and you've passed it, and now you have nothing you can do about it. So the potential for the state to revise things like this in the future could open up even more development than we're talking about tonight. Site plan review does not provide the residents of Ipswich with the ability to stop questionable development. It continues to be less risky for Ipswich to defer decision on this until the long-term impacts are better understood as other towns implement or disapprove 3A. Thank you.
School Committee, and I don't know that we've heard your vote. Your vote is what majority is?
The School Committee voted with the majority, six to one.
Six to one. Okay, thank you.
I'll take just a minute to talk about what this means for the schools. If we don't follow the law, we really have the risk of losing a significant amount of funds for our students. Middleborough just lost $73,000 in a grant a couple of months ago, because they're not in compliance with 3A. Our schools rely on a significantly larger amount of money. This year, we relied on $593,000 in grants, $735,000 in special education, over $1 million for school lunches for our students. That's over $2 million a year, every single year. And that's not all. We'll be asking the MSBA for tens of millions of dollars to help support us replace the aging school buildings, or elementary buildings. But if we don't comply, we could lose that, too. If Ipswich is out of compliance, the state is likely to use that to send a message to other school districts that are in the MSBA process. I don't like that school money is part of this debate. I'd rather not be speaking about this tonight. But it is, and our students will be the ones that are hurt if we don't act. So when you vote tonight, please think about our kids, think about our teachers, think about what it means to our town. The School Committee voted yes with the majority of six to one in support of this article.
And the minority?
Hi, Jenny Connolly, Linden Street, Ipswich School Committee. Good evening. Ipswich needs to increase housing that's more affordable for different levels of income. That's a fact. That's not in question. The question before you right now is, do we adopt the state's 3A zoning through which we would increase housing? My vote is we do not, and here's why. The state is threatening to withhold funds from our town. They are threatening to withhold money from our schools, which would have a damaging impact on our youngest, most vulnerable population. This behavior by the state shows the lengths it will go to push Ipswich into submission. Clearly, the state does not prioritize our town. So back to the question at hand. Why would we give the state more power over our town when it's already treating us badly? Let's create more affordable housing in Ipswich. Sorry. More affordable housing in Ipswich, but not under the state's thumb. We can get the state to accept the Ipswich Community Development Plan to replace the 3A zoning mandate in Ipswich. Stand up for Ipswich and say no to 3A. Please vote no.
Ipswich Housing Partnership?
And the Planning Board wants to speak as well. Would you like to?
So Ipswich Housing Partnership, and then we'll go to Planning Board.
Okay.
Charlie Allen, Nuthatch Road, Chair of the Ipswich Housing Partnership. The partnership and the trust voted unanimously in favor of this article. We are two volunteer committees that have been around for more than 20 years. Our sole focus is working to create and preserve housing options that work for a wide range of people in Ipswich. It's hard to make a meaningful impact on the challenge of housing availability and affordability, but we work at it. Ipswich lacks housing that's truly affordable to low-income people. It also lacks housing that's just of a moderate scale and works for young people starting out, single parents, maybe older folks who are trying to make retirement work based on finite savings and a fixed income. We lack rental housing really at all price levels in Ipswich. This proposal's not going to fix that problem, but it should help a little bit. And the reason I say a little bit is because not that much is changing. And we've heard a lot of those details, but to put a different shape on it, process is changing, the dimensional requirement's not changing, density's not going up. You won't be able to build more homes on a parcel of land if this passes than you can now. You won't be able to build, you still won't be able to build a building more than three stories. The only meaningful thing that's changing is that the special permit requirement for multifamily housing will go away if people elect a process through the overlay district, and the Planning Board will instead rely on the site plan review. Those evaluations are very similar. They can take all the same issues into consideration. But the special permit is kind of off-putting or intimidating for somebody who's thinking about trying to build something in Ipswich. They may find the revised process simply more hospitable, and that should encourage some development activity. Now, change is going to happen in downtown. Whether we approve these amendments or not, might this mean that changes that would otherwise happen over the next 20 years are instead going to happen in 15? That's kind of what I expect. Hard for any of us to predict. But at that level, or anything near that level, that's not tipping the scales on the infrastructure needs that we already know we're going to need to address over the next few years.
So thank you. I wonder if we could hear from the Planning Board?
Jim, I was told it had five minutes. Was that five minutes?
Yeah.
Yep. Yeah. Can I continue, please?
Finish, please.
Importantly, 10% of what gets built will be restricted as affordable. The other housing that gets built will in all likelihood be at that modest scale. It's, and it's in the area of the already-built-out downtown that we would want the new housing to be. It's the kind of housing we lack. It's the kind of housing we need. I believe that the, I can speak for the members of the partnership and the trust when I say, we'd be in favor of this even if there was no pressure from the state. Okay? And again, it's in the community development plan that we move away from that special permit process. It's not a big lever in terms of accelerating creation of housing, but it's something. And we don't get much housing built around here. We need all the little pieces of help we can get. I urge you to support the article.
Can we hear from the Planning Board?
Good evening. I promise I won't take five minutes. My name is Jen Crawford. I live at 2 Bunker Hill Road. I'm going to go a little off-script, because Sarah Player did a great job of representing a lot of the points that the Planning Board had prepared to make. The Planning Board unanimously supports this article for all the reasons that have already been stated. But there are a couple others that I want to share with you, based on the perspective of someone who's working on the Planning Board, working with developers, working with individuals in town who are... in town who are, who are trying to have their developments permitted. It's an onerous process. We've been accused that the zoning process, or the permitting process takes too long. And we've been working to try and speed things up, but give the care that we need to, to every project. This 3A is going to allow us to approve multifamily zoning projects while still focusing on the aspects of the project that are very important, but foregoing the special permit. The by right that people are getting hung up on, which is, I think, being interpreted as, oh, well, the developer can come in and do whatever they want. What it means is that instead of going through the more onerous special permitting process, instead, the focus will be on the, on the site permit process, the site review process, so that we can ensure that the, that the proposed development is consistent with what we want in town. This is, this 3A zoning is actually a slam dunk for Ipswich. Let, let me explain. Let me explain. Because, because as everyone has already said, we, we already authorized, or, sorry, approved, or, or voted on a desire to allow multifamily zoning by right in the community development plan. We could just pass a similar bylaw in town and, and get what we wanted and want, and what we already agreed to in the community development plan. However, in the years that I've been living in Ipswich, I've seen multiple zoning amendments fail because they get all caught up in the technicalities and the, and the details and whatever. And it, and it's, it's difficult for us to all agree on what is an appropriate zoning change. In this case, the state teed it up for us. They gave us the, they gave us the, what you might see as a mandate. It meshes with what we already have voted on that we want in our community. It will facilitate the development of, of more multifamily housing. And I've heard people be critical of the affordability aspect not being strong enough. Like, how are we going to get affordability if we aren't demanding that more of the units being built are affordable? It's a simple economics issue. You need more supply to meet the demand to get affordability. 3A was initiated under the Charlie Baker administration, a Republican, right? I mean, someone who was, who could, well, okay, maybe he was a rhino, but, but, but this was-
Let the speaker speak. Let the speaker speak, please.
Thank you, moderator. The, the point is, if you want more affordable housing, you have to meet the demand. And if this is a way of increasing the amount of housing in, in the center of town, on vacant lots that could use some, some sprucing up with some development, energize the downtown community while meeting the already stated objective of our community development plan, it's a slam dunk. We're not Milton. We're not Hamilton. We're Ipswich. We are our own unique place, and I think this is an excellent fit for us. Again, the planning board voted unanimously in support of this article, and I urge you to do so as well. Thank you.
So, we, we've heard from the boards and committees. Now, I want to go to the floor. Mr., Mr. Florio.
I'm going to let Michael go first. Thank you, Mr. Florio. Mr. Moderator, thank you. Threw you to the members of town meeting. I would like to encourage people that we do keep decorum here. We all are still neighbors and friends. And whether you support or are against 3A, I want to make sure that we, as a community, are voting on accurate information. And it was mentioned earlier, the SRF funding. And the only reason why I'm speaking on this in particular after already speaking is because I know a lot about the SRF funding, because it has to do with the water treatment plant project. Now, granted, there are different types of SRF funding. The type of SRF funding that we, that we were awarded has a federal dollar component to it. So because it has federal monies attached to it, the 3A mandate cannot be the deciding factor on whether or not we get that low-interest loan, because it has to be monies that is fully coming from the state. So, that was recently discovered. Our state representative, Kristin Kazner, who has been doing a good job at communicating with us locally on the changes that have been happening on Beacon Hill relative to this issue of 3A, did confirm that because of that factor, the SRF funding for the water treatment plant project would not be affected negatively if 3A were to be voted down. I just wanted to make sure that that point was made. Thank you.
Thank you. Ma'am. So, I'm going to bring something to your attention. We are about 17 or 18 minutes before 11:00. And again, as I mentioned at the beginning of the meeting, we are not allowed by bylaw to introduce any new motions, or no, any motions associated with articles after 11:00 PM. So, we have, in addition to this article, we have Article 19 and Article 20 to work on tonight. If we don't finish tonight, we're going to have to schedule a follow-up meeting and bring everybody back to finish the meeting, because nothing takes effect until we complete the warrant. Nothing takes effect. All the prior votes will not take effect until we finish the meeting. So with that having been said, and anticipating more debate, more debate on this particular article, anticipate being asked to go past 11 o'clock to finish the warrant. Second, second comment I'll make is that what I would ask speakers to do is don't repeat what someone else has already told the town meeting. When you come to speak, say something new, if you can. But I won't, I won't regulate that. So... It's not needed just yet, but... Okay. We're in the middle of one motion, so I'm going to ask that as we complete this, if we can. Let me just, let me think a second. The Chair of the Select Board wishes to make a motion to go beyond 11:00 now. It's-
(inaudible)
Once, once again, I, I appreciate the advice. But when it comes from a multitude of voices, it's hard to figure out what that advice really is. I think it's in order for the motion to be made, so I'll ask, I'll ask, I'll ask Linda to make the motion to go, to go beyond 11:00 to a time certain. To a time, yeah, go up there and make the motion. Think about a time certain.
Linda Alex and Select Board, in order that as many people as possible get to be heard on this issue, I move that we extend the time past 11:00.
Can you, would you mind making a time certain, please?
I move that we go till midnight.
Till midnight.
Up to midnight.
So, what is, what is the motion?
I move that the town meeting go up until midnight.
And there's a second? Any comments or questions on going past 11:00 to adjourn, to go no later than 12:00, which can always be modified? We could go to 1:00 or 2:00 if you choose. On process or procedure?
Process.
Process, just-
So, if we go beyond 11:00, Articles 19 and 20, nobody will be able to make a motion on those to postpone them, amend them, or do anything else.
If this motion to go beyond 11:00 fails, likely we'll have to schedule a follow-up town meeting. And bring everybody back to finish the warrant. So, that's the sense of this. So, we have a motion made, we have a motion seconded. Yes, sir. This is a simple majority. This is a simple majority. So, on a motion to extend the deadline to midnight? All those in favor? Press 1. Let's see, we're, I'm not sure what we're doing here. Yeah, I think we need to take this down. All right, let's do this again. Let's reset the timer to 15 seconds. And a motion made to extend to midnight? When I get the signal that the folks are ready here. I hope it doesn't take till midnight to get this figured out. How we doing, guys? All right, want to reset the clock to 15 seconds? Press 1 to accept the motion to go to midnight? All right, here we go. Press 1 to go to midnight, press no to stop at 11:00. We should stop. So, on a vote, a simple majority, we'll go to midnight if we have to. All right, so, yes, ma'am?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. My name is Carol Buske. I live at 27 Green Street. I'm privileged to speak tonight for the 3A for Ipswich Neighborhood Advocacy Group. We coordinated a press conference in April during Fair Housing Month. ICAM aired it. Hopefully, you got to see it. Speakers included the CEO of the North Shore Realtors and our Water Resources Manager, Rachel Belial-Toller. We learned the median price of a single-family home in Ipswich in April was $1.4 million. The Ipswich median combined household income, that is, two incomes, was $124,000 a year. Two teachers' incomes, for example, are on average $167,000 a year. To qualify for a mortgage for a $1.4 million home, the needed combined income is $222,000. The bank would require about an $80,000 cash down payment. I'm a veteran. At one point in my career, I worked for a nonprofit that houses and supports homeless veterans throughout all of New England. I retired from the real estate profession. I've seen all sides of the housing coin and everything in between. I live in senior affordable housing, the Whipple River View, a harbor-like community's property. Your support tonight will align with the recommendations of every one of our town committees who endorse passing 3A. The new law will simplify the process of building multifamily housing, three stories max, within one-half mile of the train, where historically, there were contiguous neighborhoods of multifamily homes. It will eliminate the potentially expensive process called special permitting. Rich developers can manage that, but end up raising the prices of that construction to cover those fees and delays. Our neighbors, who might like to build a two- or three-family home, quite likely couldn't struggle or manage that process. Any project within the 3A district, as usual, you heard tonight, will be required to meet every permitting process and review by every one of our boards. None of that changes. Rachel Belial-Toller, our Water Resources Manager, shared at the press conference that our population, you heard the statistics, has increased 3% over the last 15 years, while water consumption has dropped by 12%. That is data that is proven. Multifamily housing by design takes up a much smaller footprint than a single-family home with multiple bathrooms and likely a lawn that needs to be watered.
20 seconds, please.
New construction, you, what do you mean, 20 seconds?
You, you have-
I'm over? I'm over by 20 seconds?
No, you have 20 seconds left.
Oh, I don't understand why you're interrupting me. I have three minutes uninterrupted, I thought.
That's right.
All right, thank you. Let's start again. 129 communities have adopted 3A zoning, with more towns complying each week. Importantly, those towns who sued in court based on the claim that this is an unfunded mandate have all lost in court. The decision to pass 3A is based on Ipswich's unique needs and geography. It was said, we're not Hamilton, or Rowley, or Milton, or Beverly, and this is not the Bruny Project. Many of us received a group text yesterday opposing 3A. The opponents of 3A use the town seal at the top.
Thank you, ma'am. I wish you'd-
Saying yes to 3A creates opportunities. I hope you will vote yes. Thank you.
Mr. Moderator, I call the question.
The motion has been made to call a question from the question mic. If you recall my earlier comment about moving the question, it should be done from one of the, either the pro or the con, and you should wait in line and not jump the line. So, I need some cooperation here. First of all, I think the behavior issue is getting to be a bit of a problem. Okay? I'm going to try to keep people to their three-minute presentations, and I'm going to ask the full cooperation of, of the group as we move forward. Now, we just heard a pro speaker. Ma'am, you have a question on process or procedure?
Yeah.
Yes.
I believe this is the procedural mic, not just the question mic. So, if someone wants to move the question, they have to come to the procedural mic. They're not going to wait in line behind 20 people-
Yes, they are.
-to move the question. No, the procedural mic is used to move the question.
No, no, no. The procedural mic is what I intended to be used for, which is to ask questions about process.
That's not how it's been in past town meetings.
Mr. Florio.
Thank you. Before we start the clock, I just want to point out, I've arranged with Jim Engle to present a motion-
Pull up Slide 69, please.
I believe I have five minutes to do that.
Yes, you do.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay. Sorry about this. But, uh, I think it's going to be worth it. My name is Chris Florio. I live at 44 Bellows Road. At the town meeting last fall, and I think a lot of you were here for that, I made a motion similar to the one I'm about to present, which is to postpone the vote on 3A. That narrowly passed, and many of you may ask, why should we postpone this again? What's the benefit of putting this vote off even more? I only have five minutes to prevent this motion, and there's a lot more I'd like to say, but I'm going to focus on answering the question, why postpone, with three points. I want to talk about 3A regulations. I want to talk about the current court cases, and I want to talk about bills that are now in the House and the Senate in Massachusetts. Some of these have been talked about, but I want to clarify a few things that have been talked about. Other than that, I want to talk about things that haven't been addressed. For the few of you who don't have an opinion strongly about 3A, if there's any here, I'll point out that if you support my motion, you're going to get to go home a lot earlier, because the next motion will not happen if you vote for my motion. It's not a reason to vote, but I just thought I'd put that out there. Next slide.
Chris, we're having some difficulty here. Can we pull up Mr. Florio's slides, starting with Slide number 69?
And, and set the clock to five minutes.
Motion to amend the main motion, Article 18.
I'm going to keep talking while they're doing that. I don't want to waste anybody's time. Those of you here who were here last fall, remember that Dan Kelly and I stood actually right in this spot, and we made the case that because there were so many unresolved issues with 3A, we should wait to vote for that. At the time, we referenced the Milton case, which Peter Elliott also referenced. We stated that we agreed with the initial premise of the NBA to Communities Act, that building more affording, affordable housing in Ipswich made sense, that building affordable- building more affordable housing in Ipswich made sense, that building affordable housing around MBTA stations made sense. I completely agree with Carol Bousquet, that we don't have a housing problem in Ipswich, we have an affordable housing. But I disagree that replacing our required 15% affordable with 10% does not solve that But we said that the initial law made sense. What we said was the guidelines around that law were both egregious and didn't make any sense at all. The Supreme Court of Massachusetts in January ruled on the Milton case, and as Peter said, they said that the initial law was legal, and we support the initial law. What they also said was that the guidelines around the initial law were not fully thought out, were unenforceable, and were void. That's the next two slides.
Can we advance the slides, please?
After the court voided those guidelines in January, the state immediately issued emergency guidelines, and basically what they did is cut and paste the original guidelines, republished them as emergency guidelines, and said, "We have to follow these, it's an emergency," after four years. Those emergency guidelines were supposed to have been replaced in February by permanent guidelines. They were not replaced in February, they were replaced April 11th, which is just a few weeks ago. Those permanent guidelines, which were just released, are very, very different from the original guidelines. Now, my first of three points tonight is that the town meeting that we are at now, and the warrant that you all got in the mail, and the one that was on the website at 5:30, is signed by all select board members on April 7th. That was before the permanent guidelines were even released. We're being asked to vote tonight on guidelines that no longer even exist, but as has been said, if we vote on them, it doesn't matter what happens at the state level, we make them permanent in Ipswich. That's a three-minute clock, I get two more minutes as I'm making a motion. So, those guidelines that we're asking to vote on are not valid, that should be enough to vote to postpone this and not vote on it tonight. We should adjust the new guidelines, we should update the plan, everybody should get to look at them, and we should know what we're voting on. So if I do run out of time, you should still vote to postpone, because the guidelines we're voting on are not the right guidelines, they're ridiculous. The second reason to vote, and if you can go up a couple of slides, the second reason that I'm saying we should postpone is because the two representatives for our community that were here tonight, Kristin Kastner and Bruce Tar, both are co-sponsoring bills in the House and Senate to reform 3A. I spoke to Kristin Kastner's office, I spoke to Bruce Tar's office. Bruce Tar's office says the current guidelines, the current regulations, their words, heavy-handed and overreaching. If either Kristin Kastner's co-sponsored bill or Bruce Tar's co-sponsored bill, or any of a number of other bills that are currently before the State House is passed, all of them would make us completely immune to losing any grant money. So if Kristin's bill passes, if Bruce's bill passes, if any of the bills passes, we would not lose a penny of grant money. Many of the other bills, if they pass, we would be completely immune to 3A, because we have approved by the state housing production plan. And a few of the bills would override and remove 3A altogether. If those bills passed, which Kristin Kastner is doubtful about, we would, 3A would be gone forever. So, but Kristin is very optimistic that her bill is the one that's most likely to pass, and that would make us immune to losing any grant money. My last point is one that's also been brought up, so I'll keep this very brief. In the slides that I made, I pointed out that Wenham had filed a suit against the town in the last week since I turned in these slides. Hamilton has gone to court with 10 other towns, and that was rushed to court, and the hearing was just this week. The 10, I'll be very quick. The judge in that case said that the July 14th deadline, his words, was absurd. I spoke with the lawyer who's representing Hamilton, and he said that that's going to be ruled on in a couple of days in his opinion. Just an opinion, but...
20 seconds, Chris.
What that means is if you vote to postpone right now, we still have another town meeting in June, we could vote on this before the deadline if it doesn't go the way we want, but we absolutely would be out of our minds to vote on this tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Chris. Chris, I'm not sure we recorded a second, did we have a second? Thank you. Okay, so we have a motion to indefinitely postpone, so the arguments as we go forward are on that issue, not on the main issue, but whether we should indefinitely postpone or not. So, to the motion to indefinitely postpone, is there someone wishes to speak to indefinitely postponing or not?
Yes, Glenn Gibbs for Cameron Avenue, former town planner. When the 3A opponents postponed last fall's town meeting by a mere vote, the reason that was given was the town meeting should not vote until the SAD confirmed the validity of the 3A law. As we know, in January, they did indeed rule that law as constitutional, and made clear, the state made clear after that, that all 3A communities must, that they would vigorously enforce compliance, while giving Ipswich and other non-compliant towns a small window to achieve compliance, and that's the date of July 13th. We now have another motion to postpone, this time based on the argument that there are pending lawsuits, legislative proposals, alternatives to zoning, 3A zoning, that should be pursued before we decide to vote on 3A.
Take that down.
Meanwhile, however, the state's July 13th deadline to adopt 3A zoning has not gone away. The town will be out of compliance if it does not approve 3A at this town meeting, and the town will face the financial consequences associated with non-compliance. As such, the appropriate action for town meeting to take is not to kick the can down the road once again, but to actually have an up or down vote on the 3A zoning proposal itself, which it has not yet done. This motion, if it's successful, will have the same effect as the town meeting voting to disapprove the 3A zoning proposal. So I urge all of you, those of you who support 3A, and those who don't, to reject this motion to postpone, so we can get back to the business of town meeting, which is to approve or disapprove the article before you.
Joni Safran, Agawam Village, I'll be very, very brief, and these are things that have not been addressed before. For anybody who's been around even half the amount of time that I have lived in this town knows what our working wharf used to be. The state got involved because we had to fix it. Now we've lost total control of our town wharf. Years ago, you would see lobster boats tied up, clamor's boats tied up, now we are so strait-jacketed by what the state will allow us, because they pitched in a little bit of money to help clean up the wharf. So, that's been taken away from us.
So, Ms. Safran, I'm going to ask you to address the indefinite postponement. Why should we indefinitely postpone? Most of your comments seem to be directed at the main motion.
No, my comments were intended to be against the 3A for many reasons, but I would also go along with an indefinite postponement.
Thank you.
If we don't all have an opportunity to say what we want to say.
Mr. Schaaf, with respect to the motion for indefinite postponement?
Yes, Michael Schaaf, One Chegg Bark Woods. Perhaps some of us in high school or college read the play Waiting for Godot. Remember Waiting for Godot? There was a couple of fellows there, and they were waiting for Godot to meet them, and Godot didn't show up, and they said, "Oh, Godot, he's coming, he's coming." And, "Well, no, maybe he's coming later, and, oh, let's go over here and wait for him." Godot never showed up. What we have here is another Godot. We have a Godot, "Oh, there's Milton lawsuit, let's wait for that." Then we have, "Oh, we don't have the guidelines, let's wait for that." Then we have, "Oh, there's lawsuits, and who knows what's going to happen with those, or maybe there's going to be some legislative changes." Godot, wait for Godot. When will Godot get here? Godot can be tonight. People in this community need housing. We have a community which is predominantly beyond, disproportionately seniors, because we do not provide housing for other kinds of people. Multifamily housing is a suitable form of housing, we need to support and facilitate it. Don't wait for Godot anymore, vote down this postponement.
Someone from this side wants to address the indefinite postponement? If not, I'm going to ask if we're ready for a vote on the indefinite postponement? I haven't heard anyone speak up for either side on the indefinite postponement. So on the motion to indefinitely postpone, if you... Who is that someone?
All of us.
No, we don't recognize groups, we recognize...
I've lived here, I'm asking...
I move the motion, Mr. Moderator.
The motion has, the question has been moved, so we'll go to a vote.
Okay.
We'll go to a vote, because the question has been moved. So, on the vote to indefinitely postpone, which will take us back to the main motion, if we can set up our balloting... As soon as we get set up. This again is a motion to move the question, the question has been moved on indefinite postponement, so we're going to vote on... We're going to vote to stop debate or not stop debate. So if you vote yes, we stop debate on the indefinite postponement. If you, let's... I will, if you give me a chance. So listen up, please. The question has been moved. What does that mean? It means that the Assembly is being asked whether they wish to have the debate ended on the motion to indefinitely postpone. So if you vote yes on moving the question, or vote no, if you vote no, be back up, if you vote yes, and that carries, then we go immediately to a vote on the indefinite postponement. So the moving the question just simply stops the debate on the motion that's on the floor. Are we clear? Great. So, are we ready to accept votes? So, vote yes if you wish to stop debate, vote no if you wish to...
I have a procedural question about the motion to force.
What's the problem?
If the motion to postpone debate passes, what is the procedural step to get this on to the next June meeting?
Okay, let's, let's go through this again. The question has been moved, that immediately goes to a vote. If you vote yes, debate on the indefinite postponement ends. If you vote no, you wish to continue the debate on the indefinite postponement. That's all we're doing, just simply ending the debate on the motion to indefinitely postpone. It does not deal with the motion to indefinitely postpone, just with the debate associated with it. Just to end the debate. Again, if you wish to end the debate on the indefinite postponement, vote yes. If you wish to continue to debate indefinite postponement, vote no. So, we're going to ask, if the window be open, you vote yes to stop debate on the indefinite postponement, you vote no to continue the debate. So the window is being opened? Disregard the language on the screen, that's not what we're voting on. Strike the words, "Motion to postpone 18." It's just to move the question. When we get the right language displayed on the screen, we'll vote. I think you've had a preview. Okay, this is a motion to call the question. Do you want to just keep chattering, or do you want me to explain what we're doing here? Okay, what you're doing is with this vote, if you vote yes, then the debate on indefinite You already did that. Because the language... The reason we're doing this again is because the language that was displayed was incorrect. So do it, vote. Can I display the vote, please? All right. Now where are we? Here's where we are. We are no longer debating the motion to indefinitely postponement, to postpone, but it needs to be voted on. So if you are in favor, this next vote will be on the motion to indefinitely postpone. If you are in favor of indefinitely postponing, vote yes. If you are against indefinitely postponing, vote no. So, the language is correct. Again, if you are in favor of indefinitely postponement, any action on 3A, vote yes. So we'll display the vote? So, the motion to indefinitely postpone fails. So before, before, where are we now? We are back to debating the main motion. Now, if someone, if someone were to be kind to us all, they might make a motion, or they might call the question, if...
Oh, that's not, that's...
But I don't see anybody in line interested in calling the question that is at the microphone. So, Mr. Kalman.
Three minutes.
Ms. Ringel, was I not speaking before we had to do that?
I don't think you were. Mr. Kalman.
Rich Kalman, Nine Ocean Drive. I've got three minutes to get folks to change their mind that are already set to vote no. Let me just tell you the three arguments, statistics, real stories in Ipswich, and empathy. The statistics you've probably heard. We need 225,000 affordable units in Massachusetts to meet the demand that exists... We need 225,000 affordable units in Massachusetts to meet the demand that exists. We need 220,000 single-family homes. In 30 years, from 1960 to 1990, we built 900,000 homes. In the following 30 years, that ended 2020, half of that at 450. We are here because local zoning didn't work. The state has stepped in because local zoning and local control hasn't produced the units, and it's not going to produce the units. We've got 40% of the homes in Massachusetts are owned by baby boomers, and a poll of them says 78% of them want to live and die in the house they bought. So you know what that lives for, a real-life story? All these stories are in the last three weeks. There's a woman in the service industry in downtown establishment that many of you know, and she's rented a house in Ipswich with her grown sons for seven years. Well, guess what? She's moving out now because the landlord is giving the house to his son. Seven years she's been in Ipswich, they can't afford to find anything for the three kids. They're off to pivoting. Okay? There's another woman, just heard the story, 30 years old, looking for a condo in a multifamily house. Landlord just told her, guess what? House is being sold. She's just moved to New Hampshire while she tries to continue to look. And the only good story I've got is a young man in Ipswich that his family's been here for generations, and he got a house. He got a handyman special, 75,000 over asking, and it was in such poor condition, the bank said, "You've got two weeks to clean it up before we're going to send in an appraiser." And that's what you're facing in Ipswich now. You know what? I'm just saying, anything that we can do to increase housing, period, is what we should be doing. And the last point is empathy. All right? 127 towns have voted for it. Okay? It wasn't easy in any of those 127 towns. We say we want affordable housing. We put it into our community development plan, but you know what? Those are just words on paper. When you get here and you say, "Stand behind the words. We want an open, inclusive community," nobody stands up for it. Have the empathy to do what's right for the generations that have come, because most of you here are in the house. You're in your house, your biggest asset. We're trying to do something for folks...
20 seconds.
We're trying to do something for folks just trying to get their foot in the door. And anyone who thinks that this 3A is going to produce huge changes, it'll take 10 years, maybe, to get a few dozen more houses. The ADU law is probably going to produce more than 3A. But the point is, show some empathy for the generations to come.
Thank you, Mr. Kalman. Ms. Softin.
Thank you. Namahego, Journey Softin, Aguan Village. In addition to losing what we knew as our wharf many, many years ago because of the state stepping in, now we're looking at losing our ability to control our own zoning. In my opinion, suggesting that we will be denied grants, denied funding, if we do not follow along with the guidelines that they're presenting for 3A is nothing more than extortion by the state of Massachusetts against a town that calls itself the birthplace of American I think we've all forgotten what we used to have in this town. We're losing it. We're losing it rapidly. And you, all of us who were born here, know what I'm talking about, those of you who have been here for many reasons? Because you want to be here, because you love it, because you care about what we have. And that's what we're losing. You're losing it too. And I just think that until the state gets its act together and gets something that is actually passable, that's not an emergency mandate stupid thing, that we should know. Say no. Absolutely no. Let us govern our own town, keep the state out of it. It's just bullying. And I would like to just add one last quiet thing. I was home this afternoon, kind of just doing my own thing. I opened my text messages, and there's a text message on the town of Ipswich letterhead that went out to hundreds of people in this town to try and support 3A. I am absolutely disgusted that people are invading my private space, have my phone number, and then using letterhead, whether it was IE or not. But it did come through on town letterhead. And then to get text messages on a phone number from the committee, the people who are pushing this so hard, is another blatant disregard for my position, what I feel. So, those bullying antics are dribbling down from the state to our little community.
20 seconds.
And that's very sad.
I call the question.
Okay, the question has been moved. It's getting a little repetitive. When the question is moved, it's not debatable. So we immediately go to a vote on whether to stop debate or not. Again, when debate stops, you still have to deal with the main motion, but we go directly to the main motion vote. So, on the motion to call the question, if you wish to stop debate, vote yes. If you wish to continue debate, vote no. Close the vote. So the debate has ended, and now we move to the main motion. It has been suggested that since this is a contentious issue, that perhaps we ought to leave the voting window open longer than 15 seconds. Now, the earlier vote that I had asked you for was an advisory vote to the moderator. So it's my call as to whether to extend the voting window. I can't imagine that one side or the other of this debate would be favored or disfavored by leaving the window open longer than 15 seconds. So I am going to ask that the window be for 30 seconds. So as soon as we get that set up, we'll ask you to vote. Reminder that this is a simple majority vote. So where the clock is set at 30 seconds, we'll start the clock, and we'll ask you to start
What are we voting for right now? 3A?
Just to be clear, you're voting on the main motion, which is to adopt the 3A. And it's a simple majority. Close the window. So we'll move to Article Number 18. And again, the objective is to finish the warrant so that we don't have to come back another night, and we have 32 minutes to do that. So Article 19, which is a citizen's petition.
Paul Calabah, 8 Bell Street. So, the mission has been accomplished on this, but my...
Excuse me, Paul. Let me... If you could leave quietly or not leave at all, I'd appreciate it. Please wait a minute. Mr. Calabah, please. Please.
Yes. Paul Calabah, 8 Bell Street. So, my reason I introduced this article, or this petition, was that I was asked the Select Board whether they had gathered feedback from citizens and employees on Mr. Crane's performance. They said, "No, they did no formal 360-degree review." So the problem has kind of solved itself, but the problem continues that the Select Board still believes that they don't have to get our input on the most important position pretty much in town, the town manager and his performance. And so that's why I put this on here. So I wanted to send them a clear message of what we thought of the town manager, get our feedback, record it, and that's all I was asking. So, that's it, in a nutshell.
Would you move to take no action on this?
No.
So make the motion.
I'm not going to make a motion.
You're not going to make the motion? Hearing no motion, we'll move to Article 20.
Wait a minute. Wait a minute. We're taking a vote on this. Nobody made a motion to postpone it or dismiss it.
You... Excuse me. Without a motion, we have nothing to vote on. So you either make a motion...
I have the motion right there.
Make it.
It's right there. I, Paul Calabah, 8 Bell Street, move the town meeting vote no confidence in the performance of the current town manager.
Does it have a second? It's moved and seconded. Select Board.
Thank you. Linda Alexson, Select Board. I am not going to address Mr. Calabah's petition directly because it is the use of a town meeting citizen's petition to essentially conduct a performance evaluation that I have serious concerns about. The town manager is an employee who reports to the Select Board, just like all other town employees report to their supervisors. If a performance or employment issue arises for any of our town employees, those are handled through objective legal processes, and the town manager position is no exception. Town meeting is not the appropriate venue for Mr. Calabah's petition, as this body does not have the authority to conduct performance evaluations for our town employees, or to instruct any employee supervisors, including the Select Board, how to handle personnel issues. The Select Board unanimously opposes this petition.
Finance Committee.
The Finance Committee unanimously opposes this position because town meeting is not a place for individual performance reviews. I would refute your claim, Mr. Calabah, that you, the Select Board, would not listen to your feedback. You can share feedback with them at any point, and you share your feedback with them at the ballot box every year. So, we strongly support no opposition to... So, we strongly support opposing Article 19 because it is not how we do business here in Ipswich.
Thank you. School Committee.
The School Committee is in unanimous support of the other boards, and that we do not recommend this.
Do not recommend unanimously. Thank you. So, yes, sir?
I move that we call the question.
You move the question?
Yes.
So, again, it's a two-vote deal here. So, on moving the question, if you vote yes, we stop debate. If you vote no, we can continue the debate. So, if we're set up with our 15-second clock, again, vote yes for no debate, vote two... I'm sorry, vote yes for no debate, vote two for debate. And we'll need less than five minutes, I think, on this one. Okay, clock is running. Vote yes to stop debate, vote no to continue debate. Close the clock. Report the vote. Debate has stopped, so we move to the motion itself, which is to express no confidence in the current town manager. So we'll set the clock for 15 seconds. If you are in favor of the motion to support no confidence, vote yes. If you are not in favor of a no-confidence vote, vote no. So we'll set the clock for 15 seconds. Report the vote, please. The motion fails. Article 20, citizen's petition. Chris Carroll. Chris, let's make sure we get your slides ready before you start talking. So we should be talking... Unfortunately, we're out of sync on the numbers. We want number 64. I think we're all set, Chris.
Great.
Call... When you want your slides advanced, call for it, please.
Good evening. I, Christopher Carroll, of 33 Upper River Road, move that the town meeting expresses desire to support cost efficiency in Ipswich school building projects as described in Article 20 of the warrant for this town meeting with the following language change in Section 2, removing the words "large" and "small" and replacing them with "all reasonable options for."
Do you have a second? You've made the motion. You need a second?
Second.
Thank you.
Thank you. That's actually my initial slide. I think we have them somewhat out of order. But this is fairly straightforward. I can speak, Jim, without the slides, if that's okay in the interest of time. As an introduction to Article 20, the MSBA, the Massachusetts School Building Authority, created the model school program in 2008 as a cost-saving option to use available designs from successful, previously-built schools. Article 20 is asking that the town of Ipswich review this program and present its findings to the public. This article does not commit or limit the town to any plan. A little bit about the MSBA model school program. Its quoted intent was savings through innovation. The program's goals: to shorten and streamline the design process, to compress project schedules and accelerate construction start times, and to enhance predictability of project costs and performance quality. The goals of this article: to assure that the MSBA's model school program is understood and considered as an option by both voters and town officials; to facilitate a thorough and transparent cost review of all reasonable building options on the Doian site without advocating for any specific school building size or type; to increase public consensus in support of a new elementary school at the Doian site through better understanding of the cost factors involved. Thank you.
Thank you. School Committee? School Committee.
Thank you. I, Haley Rist, Long Meadow Drive, School Committee member, move to amend the main motion under Article twenty by substituting in its entirety the words "that town meeting express its desire that consideration be given to the participation in the Model School Program in accordance with the Massachusetts School Building Authority process."
Is there a second?
Sorry, can the motion be on the slide?
Do we have a slide for that? We used to do this without slides, and I'm wondering whether that was a better process. We have no. So would you just repeat your motion, please, just so people can listen up, please? Not that slide, take that slide down, please.
Move to amend the main motion under Article twenty by substituting in its entirety the words "that town meeting express its desire that consideration be given to participation in the Model School Program in accordance with the Massachusetts School Building Authority process."
So we already have a second, so Hillary, you can address the motion. This is a late-hour amendment. It's not even, well, it's now about six hours old, five hours old, and getting it into the video presentation is a challenge at best, so I don't think we have an overhead for that. So do you wish to speak to your amendment?
Yes.
Please.
I need a second, I think. Thank you. The Ipswich School Committee believes that any school building or renovation project must strike a balance between cost efficiency, educational excellence, and other critical factors such as timeline, risk, and equity. While the spirit of Article twenty aligns with the school committee's commitment to cost efficiency and exploring the MSBA Model School Program, the article does not fully represent the process outlined by the MSBA. The MSBA follows a prescriptive process, and the discussion of the Model School Program will occur during the feasibility study phase. The MSBA's process includes a careful evaluation of design options based on enrollment, educational planning, and site conditions, with full discretion of the MSBA to grant an invitation into the Model School Program based on the district's preferred solution. Prematurely requiring specific analyses or public hearings risks misaligning the town's priorities with the MSBA guidelines, potentially hindering the process and creating confusion. While we fully support and invite community involvement and cost efficiency, this article, as written, is misguided. It is vital for us to follow the MSBA process to ensure a balanced approach that considers both cost and the educational needs of all students. During a conversation with the School Committee Chairperson Diana Freehan and Superintendent Dr. Blake on Tuesday, May sixth, our understanding of the process was confirmed by Diane Sullivan, the Director of Program Management at the MSBA. This discussion reinforced that the approach outlined by the MSBA is the appropriate course of action. In order to perform a feasibility study, the town must first vote to fund the feasibility study. The School Committee supports memorializing the town's interest in exploring the Model School Program as it aligns with our objective of pursuing cost-efficient solutions. However, it is equally important that any design analysis also fully prioritizes the educational plan, ensuring that it is not overshadowed by cost considerations alone. Our amendment simplifies the language, focusing on expressing the town's desire for consideration of the MSBA Model School Program without imposing actions that could conflict with the MSBA's comprehensive process. This approach reflects our shared interest in staying aligned and focused on the immediate steps ahead, and with optimism, we look forward to working together to move the process forward thoughtfully. Please support this amendment. Thank you.
Thank you. Did we get a second? I think we did. Yeah, we got a second. So on the amendment after, offered by the School Committee, we'll go to debate. Yes, sir.
Good evening. My name is Peter Cushing. I live at Two Pillow Lace Lane. I currently serve as the Assistant Superintendent of Enrichment, Innovation, and Operations for the Medford Public Schools. I have helped to author, not helped, I have directly authored, three statements of interest for projects with the MSBA. I have co-authored two statements of interest for comprehensive core programs for Bartlett High School and the Medford Comprehensive High School that we are moving through the process right now. I am in full support of the amendment because the original motion shows a complete lack of understanding of the very regimented and rigorous process that the Massachusetts School Building Authority places on districts and school committees to carefully navigate through this process. This is not something for discussion at this stage when we have not even fully entered eligibility. The way the process works is you are invited. Medford was invited in December of 2023, and we didn't even start our process until the end of May 2024. We were in a holding pattern for several months. We then enter an initial eligibility phase to talk about what our academic programs look like. We only were invited to feasibility about a month and a half ago, and we just selected a designer. I simply want to finish this. It is a regimented process. You cannot usurp it because you want to go with a model program at this time. Thank you.
Mr. Moderator, are you going to hear from the boards?
On the amendment.
Yeah, on the amendment.
On the amendment. So School Committee is unanimous on the amendment. Select Board unanimous?
No.
I'm sorry. Correct me, then. The School Committee is five-zero on the amendment. Select Board unanimous? Finance Committee?
Finance Committee is unanimous in support of the amendment, but I will just say that we also voted unanimously in support of the original article with the provision that three words were removed from that, "large" and "small," schools. We are very much in support of the idea of seeing whether there is potential for savings with the Model School Program. You could save maybe three to eight percent on a hundred and fifty million dollar project. That's significant. It's very significant. You know, whether it works out or not, we don't know, but I think the intent of this article was a sense of town meeting that we should pursue that, and I think the Finance Committee continues to support that. The School Committee has come forward with a different motion, which is in response to concerns they had about process and procedure, but I think it expresses what the Finance Committee supports, which is the intent of the town to pursue seriously the potential for savings through the Model School Program. So we support this motion unanimously.
Thank you. Oh, let's see. Sir.
Edwin, or Charlie Quimby, Eighteen County Street. I guess I just have a question about the motion. I'm not really against it.
I'm sorry, you have to speak up.
I have a question about the motion and question. I know other town committees have taken non-binding votes in expressing, expressing support of one consolidated school at Doian site. How would this motion to explore model schools be different in the fact that it's not binding the town or the school committee to any decision regarding the school? Like, if town committees already taken a non-binding vote for one consolidated school, how would a motion at town meeting to explore model schools be different?
Okay, again, a little bit of Town Meeting 101. Town meeting as a body is really sort of an approving body. It cannot dictate outcomes. It can approve bonding issues, it can approve expenditures, that sort of thing, but it cannot direct a body to do a specific thing. And the word of this motion, the word of the original motion, the word of the article, the key words in here are "expresses its desire." The town meeting expresses its desire. So it sort of creates a moral imperative to the town officials to do this, but it cannot force it. Does that answer your question?
No. It does not. My question is...
Well, I'm sorry I wasted that time, then, because we are approaching midnight.
We are. I've served on the School Committee for the past year as a student representative, and I have seen the School Committee take a non-binding motion in support of one consolidated school at Doian.
Yes.
I know, I am aware that other committees have done the same thing. My question is, if those are non-binding votes, and this is a non-binding article to explore model schools, how is it interfering with the MSBA process to have a non-binding motion in support of model schools? How is that any different to have a non-binding motion in support of one consolidated school? Both seem to be expressing the will of people before MSBA has even looked into the feasibility of any consolidated or two schools or model schools or whatever have.
Jim, if I may?
Yeah.
Please, Hillary. Yeah, very much appreciate.
The MSBA is responsible for guiding districts through the feasibility study and design phases. The wording of the warrant article suggests that the town controls evaluation and analysis, which may conflict with the MSBA's role in leading the evaluation of what is feasible and cost-effective within the district's educational plan. So what, the way the process works is, within the feasibility study, the town, the school building committee will put forth a preferred solution based on cost analysis, based on the whole prescribed process that the MSBA outlines for us. Once that solution is put forward, we can indicate to the MSBA that we would like to be considered in the Model School Program as a possible option to execute our preferred solution. They then make the determination whether or not they will allow us to enter the Model School Program as an option. They make that determination. The way the article is worded, it gives a potential false impression that we have control over that process. We can and will and intend to, and as the motion encourages, want to support the town's voice in saying, when that appropriate juncture hits in the feasibility process, that we will indicate an interest in exploring model school options. That's what this says we will do.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Gary Champion, Three Palomino Way. Ipswich has been invited into the MSBA program, the Mass School Building Authority, for the second time since 2014. The MSBA is not an entitlement program. Towns must do it the MSBA way to get MSBA funding or get out of the program. The MSBA requires a project team, which includes the school, a school building committee. The school building committee appointments include the school superintendent, the school principal, town manager, at least one school committee member, a town budget official, or a member of the Finance Committee, a person knowledgeable on the education mission, a town official that maintains buildings. The project team from the MSBA also includes a professional owner's project manager approved by the MSBA. This is the person that guides Ipswich through the MSBA process. The project team includes a professional designer, also approved by the MSBA. You might think of an architect, designer is the term they tend to use. The project team does all the hard work during the MSBA feasibility study that we're discussing here. The feasibility study is where we have many posted public meetings to evaluate all the elementary school information and options, which includes an education plan, space requirements, design parameters, new or rebuilt schools, costs, the model and custom school designs. An MSBA official put it this way: If the district were to select new construction as the preferred option at the conclusion of the feasibility study, we would consider model school options. If a model school match is not identified, the district would advance a custom design as it did in the previous project back in, beginning in 2014. If Ipswich likes a particular MSBA-approved model school design, we can hire that designer. A comprehensive work, this comprehensive work cannot be done by an ad hoc committee that does not have the required capacity or the information the MSBA project team will have. This motion fulfills the CP warrant, the Citizen Petition warrant article request, Mr. Carroll's request, that model schools are evaluated during feasibility study. That's the most important thing to do. The MSB requires that model schools are evaluated during feasibility study. The School Committee, Select Board, and Finance Committee should, in fact, do support this. I urge you to support this motion and let Ipswich move forward with a successful MSBA school building funding application. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Carroll.
Just two quick points here. First of all, it is, it is my understanding after meeting with the MSBA that in order to have model schools considered, the town must ask for it. It is not mandated. The town must ask for this to occur. The reason being, the MSBA does not want to get into town politics. They created the program in 2008 to provide a cost-saving option, but a town must request in order for that process to occur. That's a point that I have heard misstated several times. Secondly, I'd also like to consider one thing, that I, as a private citizen, was able to get slides and provide language and have discussions with all of the boards, and they had a tremendous amount of time to consider my words. And yet, a motion to change my language came literally beyond the eleventh hour. So I would, I would respectfully suggest that when you consider this, consider what I have presented, what you have been able to read, and what I tried to amend to make the boards happy. Consider that up or down, rather than considering language, which we were not able to see and which frankly, at this hour, I find a little hard to follow. Thank you.
Thank you. We have, we have, we have six minutes. We can either...
Move your question.
We have, we have...
I move, move question.
We, the question has been moved. I'm going to do this on a voice vote. It'll be a lot quicker. On, on moving the question, which means we stop debate and go to the main motion, all those in favor of stopping debate, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
No.
No. Thank you. Now we, now we, now we go to the main, to the amended motion, which is what is displayed here. I'm also going to try this on a voice vote because I really don't want to go past midnight. So all of those in favor of the Haley Rist amendment, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
It passes. Business. Wait, don't leave, don't leave, don't leave.
Hold on, hold on.
One, one more vote. We, we, you moved to accept the amendment, now we have to vote the amendment, we have to move the amended motion. So all those in favor of the amended motion, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Thank you very much for your cooperation, and excuse any of my shortcomings. Motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
So move, we stand adjourned.